Thank you, Ryan.
With that, Madam Secretary, I will pass it over to you to go through the agenda and announce the first item.
Okay, the first item is a vote to approve 175 North Harvard Street, which includes 100 South Campus Drive adjacent to Smith Playground in Alston.
Great. If any of the attendees are representing this project, if you just raise your hand and Shauna will transfer you over.
And Shauna, can you also promote Liza to a panelist? Thank you.
Shauna, I'm still seeing five people with their hands raised at the top. I don't see that.
Yes, I'm trying to get to everyone.
Thank you. Mark, is there's two more people coming over, Ray and Peter? Do you maybe want to start with the interior project?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, and good morning, Parks Commissioners. I'm Mark Handley. I'm the Director of Government and Community Affairs at Harvard University. I'm joined by the 175 North Harvard Street team. We have about a 10 or 12 slide presentation for you today. And I'm just going to, I see Jason is running the deck, so that's the magic, and I've got most of the team on, so we can jump right in. It's terrific to be here with you today. Thank you. We're excited to present to you a project that has gone through Article 80 review and zoning, and now is in front of you, that is adjacent to Smith Field in Alston, the American Repertory Theater and significant Harvard University institutional housing. So just quickly, the location, you see on the left here, we're in the North Alston neighborhood, near what we call Berry's Corner, the intersection of North Harvard Street and Western Avenue. We are adjacent to the 14-acre City of Boston Park, Smith Field. And you see on the right, we have a project site that is comprised of two major components. Immediately adjacent to the park, institutional housing for Harvard University. That's proposed to be about 276 institutional units. That would be about 500 beds of Harvard housing. And on the North Harvard Street front, the new Performing Arts and Creative Center for the American Repertory Theater. They will, they will have a new home in Alston when we complete this project. And here is how the site looked prior to our getting started with the demolition. This site was actually the first home of the Harvard Ed Portal, if you're familiar with with that benefit. We had taken that building down, but what you see here was a one-story brick building that also housed other university groups and athletic teams. That space has been demolished, and we are preparing and very ready to begin construction sometime soon. Here is a plan view of the site. You see immediately across the South Campus Drive Street to the top of this depiction is the housing, which we refer to also as 100 South Campus Drive. That's Harvard affiliate housing. And again, you see on the North Harvard Street side, a new center for creativity for the American Repertory Theater. And I'm going to hand it over to Dennis Vermillion of Marvel Architects for a brief design presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you to the Commission. I see that I can't activate my camera, so that's all right with me, but if you'd like to see me, I'm happy to do that also, if you could activate. What we're looking at here is our street elevations, so these are two-dimensional elevations, really a little bit to show straight on the heights of the buildings and some of the details. Really, the composition of the buildings relative to continuum, you can see in this top image, continuum to the left, and then McCurdy Track and Harvard Stadium would be to the right with the theater in the foreground. So this is looking from North Harvard Street, looking west. You can see the residential building behind the theater. And this composition going from kind of lower portion of the activated theater up to the residential portion beyond. The lower street elevation, looking from really be standing in the middle of McCurdy Track, you see the theater on the left and the housing portion on the right. The, this is the tallest portion of the housing portion of the hard, housing building, excuse me, that's facing McCurdy Track. From the south, an elevation would be hard to see, you'd be looking at the out of the continuum building, but this is from Ivy Lane, so primarily the service side of the building, although again, activated throughout. You see the theater in this case on the right side, and then the affiliate housing on the left. This is the lowest portion of the building is facing to the south towards the Lower Alston Neighborhood. And as you see on the bottom rendering, this is the west elevation facing Smith Field Playground. You can see the continuum building to the right, that would be the, the Science Building in the background is kind of the gray mass. And you can see the building stepping up from a seven-story building to a 13-story building, floor-to-floor heights of 11 feet, so we're going from 77 feet on the, the right side to 143 feet to the rooftop on the left side. We've heard the comments about shadows. We have, over time, working with the BPDA, reduced the height of the building to mitigate shadows. We have presented previously this study that shows various shadow, potential shadows, starting with the blue line that was the, the 2013 approved IMP, and moving through some iterations of sort of a typical massing, where we were when we first presented, which is the red line, and then finally where we ended up by reducing the height of the building by a story with the yellow line, which actually decreases this amount of shadow from the approved IMP massing. We had also provided a, a time lapse of, of the shadows on this project, which is available as well, and that, that's been shared previously, I believe. And jump to the next. So over time, again, working with the BPDA, hearing comments from different commissions, there have been changes, some substantial changes for the theater. Now, I'm, I'm the architect for the residential portion, but I'm speaking briefly for the theater group. They've added, I think, a lot of ferocity to the theater, really to help views into the theater. There have been changes to the yard here, this kind of framed area that's both for, for private performances and public use as well, that you can see in the upper renderings, and you can see the changes. For the housing, I think the most substantial change relevant to this presentation is the reduction in height of the building. And also, we took mechanical equipment, really tried to move it back away. We saw the comment about whether shadow studies took into account mechanical equipment. They do. But this is a passive house project. It was actually considerable amount of mechanical equipment on the roof. And we've, we've taken pains to, to push that back away from the edge of the building to further mitigate shadows. A few other changes that have happened to the building over time. We've added articulation to the brickwork and the brick detailing. We've projected these piers out so that these four steps read more clearly from a distance. And on the lower left, you see, there's a feature that runs around the perimeter of the building, but this facing Smith Field Park are these townhouse units. So these are duplex apartment units, but they really feel like a, a townhouse, and they have private entrances facing Smith Field Park, which we felt was an appropriate way to activate the street without overwhelming it. So the primary entrance for the building is on the north side, opposite of McCurdy Track. There's an additional entrance on this side, but it goes to a, the lower portion of the building with fewer, fewer residents entering. Thank you, that's over on that side. And then on the lower right, an image of, of the courtyard, we'll talk about that in a little more detail in a moment. The theater as well, a few more images. This is really kind of a walk-around. There's been changes and development of the signage, and also materiality, adding wood cladding to the building, extending some of the murals that you can see on the upper-left image, but is wrapping around the massing that's on the right side of that image. You can see also very clearly on the lower-right image. And on the lower-left side, this would be the walking down Ivy Lane. So this would be your approach from Berry's Corner to the theater. I'm going to hand off to my colleague, Yadiel Rivera, who's our landscape architect at Marvel.
Hi, hi, everyone. Can you all hear me? Sounds like you can. Yeah. Thank you, Dennis. So just to talk briefly about the space, the open space in between these two buildings, which we're calling it a courtyard. This is a space that has been conceptualized around the residential building and to provide amenity spaces and open spaces for, primarily for the residents. So you'll see a collection of, you know, different gathering spaces that go from, you know, the, the street and South Campus Drive and Ivy Lane on the opposite side towards, you know, the building, the adjacency of the building. And, you know, one of the ideas is that, you know, you provide a very, we're trying to provide a very lush green landscapes. You see large, largely planted areas, and this gathering spots is sort of nestled in between lush green spaces. And that's very intentional. As you approach the building and get closer to the residential amenities that are on the ground floor, you see that the landscape opens up a little bit more, and it sort of serves as this sort of clearing in the woods of sorts, right? The last thing I wanted to mention about the courtyard itself is that, you know, this, we, we sort of been thinking about it in terms of the great tradition of courtyards that Harvard University has developed throughout the years. And it is a space that, while it is crafted primarily for the residents, it, it has a clear threshold to enter into that space, and it's semi-public. So your, so general public can actually go through it while offering primarily uses for the residents.
And Commissioners, thank you, Yadiel. It's back to me now. We've got about three more slides for you that overview where the concept for this project came from and how we have handled benefits for the project overall and for Smith Field specifically. So you see here, these were our earliest massing depictions of the project that is now in front of you, all the way back before, this is actually probably a 2012 depiction that was approved by the BPDA in 2013 to be a significant housing, but also a basketball arena for Harvard University. And in the 10 years since, and actually pretty quickly after the 2013 IMP was approved, Harvard made a major investment in the existing basketball arena further inside the athletics campus. And the event component of this project was reorganized and reprogrammed. And by the time we proposed this project in the 2019 timeframe, we had also announced a major gift that enabled that component to be the American Repertory Theater. So this is way back from 2013, and these were their earliest thoughts about massing studies and the goals that we were seeking to accomplish in our approved IMP. So moving dramatically ahead, this is a slide that we showed the BPDA Board in November. And this is a depiction of some of the project benefits. We've got another slide right after this related to park benefits. You can read these for yourself, but the realization of significant new institutional housing is probably the biggest goal we're accomplishing here, along with significant jobs, along with a new American Repertory Theater home. But again, you know, Harvard has significant student and graduate affiliate housing in Alston and naturally in Cambridge. But this will grow that portfolio significantly when we can bring it online. And this is a depiction of the benefits that we extended through the Article 80 regulatory process directly to the adjacent park, Smith Field. So we've got the
Is he frozen for everyone else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there anyone else from the Harvard team that wants to pick up on these benefits? Well, Mark tries to get back online.
I'm sorry I was interrupted, but I'm immediately back now.
Sorry, I lost connectivity. I can reshare.
No, no. So we're almost at the end. The last bullet there was related to Harvard's Public Realm Flex Fund, which was a five-plus million-dollar fund that was agreed to when our IMP was approved in 2013. And that is a slide that we used again at the BPDA Board to suggest that Harvard is very enthusiastic about extending as much of those remaining dollars, which are, I think, 1.86 million to parks in Alston-Brighton as we have quite successfully in the past. So that is a fund that is administered and ultimately approved by the BPDA. There's an RFP process that Parks is quite familiar with and has been very successful with in the past. And we are enthusiastic, especially because across the next year, we will be proposing a new tenure IMP with new tenure benefits. We're enthusiastic to get that funding out on the street through that RFP process and potentially support Alston-Brighton Parks again in a very big way. So that basically concludes the presentation. And we would love to take any questions and answer any, do anything we can.
Thank you very much for the presentation. While we're on mitigation, just because the slide went off, and I don't know if everybody caught everything on there for parks, just to make sure. I have it right here, Mark, and please correct me. There's a proposed $300,000 donation to the Fund for Parks and Recreation. In addition, there is about $250,000 for the work and enhancements to Smith Field, as well as tree care. Well, here we go, replacement of the dead trees. And then again, we have the chance to apply to the RFP process for additional funds for parks in the Alston-Brighton area. Correct?
Thank you, Commissioner, for reiterating that. I must have, I, I must have been talking at my screen for a lot longer than I realized. So forgive me. But yes, all of these benefits were discussed and agreed to within the Article 80 process, but these are specifically benefits for the adjacent park. These are all wrapped into a cooperation agreement that we have with the city. And I think, Commissioner, you just captured exactly the essence of the benefits.
And could anyone on the team speak to any net gain on trees? Are there any new trees being planted as part of this project around? I think I saw some on the courtyard and things, but.
Yadiel, you want to take that?
Oh, well, yes, there's a significant amount of new trees in the courtyard area as well as all around the block, you know, facing Smith Field. There is obviously street trees, but we also have intermediate row of planted areas that also has additional trees as well.
So net, net a significant canopy came from the pre-existing condition. We're also able to successfully transplant any trees that need to be relocated prior to start of the work elsewhere on campus. So there's, there's quite a success story with tree canopy wise on campus.
Would you be able to take the presentation down just so we can see the other?
Sure.
Hey, Ryan, I'm having a hard time with your audio. For some reason, you kind of like go out and in. So if you can just maybe move it a little closer, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions from Commissioners that they have?
Dave? A couple of questions. Can you talk about how much or what the percentage you reduced the shadow from the original design to the current design? What percentage did you reduce it by?
We, I'd have, I don't have the numbers right in front of me. I think it was about a four or 5% reduction. I think the, what we're showing here in the, in the diagram is sort of a the most impactful time of shadows, which is a time of day when, you know, people might be using the park and that the shadows, I think, are the most. I think the, the video that we provide, and I think there's a link to it, shows the full day and the full time of year. So from 120-foot bar building, which is what we, we started with, with the IMP, the new massing reduces by some percentage points. And I think as significantly that we've moved the shadows north away from, I think, the, the ball courts and into the outfield of the, of the baseball fields, which again was very intentional to kind of aggregate the height of the building and most of the units to the northeast portion of the residential side of the site. So this was, I think, both quantitatively less shadow, but also qualitatively, we believe, is, is a benefit as well.
Okay, and two other questions. I, I may have missed it, but is there a kind of greensward or open space connection between your very nice courtyard and the parkland? I, I may have missed that, but is there a connection, direct connection?
Not a connection. So the, the courtyard that you see in the plans runs north-south. So it runs really from South Campus Drive, where it runs between the McCurdy Track and the building, and then runs south down to Ivy Lane. We have aligned, so there is a, a footpath that is publicly accessible or is similar to Harvard.
Okay.
To Harvard yards that people can use that goes from north to south. But there's not a connection other than the building entry. There's a, a building vestibule that faces Smith Field Park, but there's not a greenway entry to east to west.
And do you see that courtyard as kind of publicly used, used by the public or passed through for the public in any way or?
I, you know, over time, working with the BPDA, that, that's the way we had started it actually some years back, that it was much more considered sort of a greenway that ran north to south. The comments that we received really made it clear that it would be better, more functional, as really primarily addressed towards residential uses. And I think this is one of the comments we got from the parks is to try and mitigate some of the uses of all these residents on the park. So it, the design has, has morphed over time to become, I think, a little bit more of a residential courtyard. But it is certainly open to the public, and it would be maintained that way as well. So we're trying to strike a balance of making it feel a little bit more sheltered, but also, you know, there is a clear pathway straight through.
And last question, the institutional housing, is that all for students or is it for students and workers?
It, the residence is for Harvard affiliates, so it's going to be students and faculty. So it's basically older students, graduate students and families, students with families, and then faculty members also, meaning, you know, what the right term would be, assistant faculty, right?
Okay, thank you.
Graduate students, thank you.
And Commissioners, staff are eligible to be in Harvard University housing. So it's students, faculty and staff. And just to make sure it's clear, the plan remains that virtually all of Harvard College students will continue to live in Cambridge on campus. So this is graduate student affiliates, as well as faculty, as well as, as staff eligible to live there, not Harvard College students.
Thank you.
Other Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, following up the clarification on the housing, I'm curious if pets would be allowed in those units? And if so, see, it's a shared question. If so, what accommodations are being made in the open space to make sure that all pet relief happens within your property and not on the parks nearby?
Mark, you can elaborate, but generally pets are discouraged from the housing. But I think the reality is in this day and age, that's not possible to exclude pets. So we anticipate a few, and so we've made some accommodation in this yard also. I think it's really an operational question as well, and maybe Mark or Jason wants to pick up on that. But we initially thought pets are excluded, but we've come to realize that we needed to make some accommodation. It's reality. We don't anticipate a lot of pets in the building.
In, in the, in the reason we anticipated is because based on the year-to-year experience and the rest of the portfolio, you know, Harvard obviously and naturally accommodates service animals in Harvard University housing. But Harvard does not accommodate pets that aren't service animals, and therefore their proportion of households within the portfolio that have service animals is quite low compared to most other residential housing in Boston. And because this was a topic that we looked into and measured over the course of the approval process, we've also included a pet relief station in the design of that outdoor courtyard.
All right, excellent. I appreciate that. And then I have one last question. You mentioned that you reduced the height of the building in order to mitigate the impact of the shadows. I'm curious if you could quantify the impact of that change? Did you have a reduction in units? Or is there any other measurable impact to the project by reducing the building height?
I think the, there was a net change of units, I think, by one. What we ended up doing was the, the ground floor was primarily a double-height space, so it's 11-foot floor-to-floor typically. There's a fitness room, many residential buildings that had a basically 22-foot double height by the time you put all the mechanicals in, it was quite low. But what we did was we took away most of those double-height spaces and took units off the top and sort of squeezed them in. I mean, really, we were trying to get as many beds and as many units as we could out of, out of the building. So we tried to maintain that, but then at the same time, reducing the height. I think, in summary, net, there was not a loss of units through the height reduction. So we're able to maintain the unit count and just reallocate amenity space and rework how we were enclosing mechanical equipment.
All right, excellent. Thank you.
I, I guess I have a, a question too, relative to the shadowing. If maybe you could characterize, you know, what the true impacts are to, to the park landscape and to people who are making use of the facilities at the park. And it seems like, you know, the, the impacts were greatest in the seasons of less heavy use early in the year and then very late in the year where the shadows extend over a considerable portion of the park in the morning hours. In June, where the park tends to be most active and when the park landscape most needs the sun to support the growth of turf and trees and so on and so forth. It seems like it's really limited to the very early morning hours till about nine o'clock or so. And then much of the landscape is, is free from the shadows. So I'm just trying to, you know, beyond the technical aspects of it and what's shown from the shadow study, what does it really mean in regard to park landscape and park users and so on and so forth? And I guess I'm, I'm trying to sort of summarize that in my own mind.
Yeah, I think what you said is correct, that particularly in the summer, you know, the shadows until about 10:00 in the morning, maybe are off, by 10:00, 10:30, they're off the park. I think by, there's a little bit of shadow maybe at the edge. I was just looking at the, the, the full, the full year animation of this. But by 11:00 all year round, basically 11:00, 11:30, there's no shadow at all on the park all year round. In the summer months, it's much earlier in the morning. And again, the shadows are really, say, concentrated there at the north side, which is that they're on the, the outfield of the ballpark, which is what, where we're trying to keep it away from the basketball courts, and we don't cast any shadow on the playground. I would say, you know, at sunrise, we'll cast a shadow, but that's, you know, because the sun is so low. But really, at any time that we'd expect people to be there, there's, there's are not many shadows on the park. But we do understand that in those early morning hours, it, it does cast some shadow. But your, I think your summary is, was accurate.
Thanks, Dennis. And then one other question, and I was picking up on what Commissioner Quillian was talking about earlier in regard to the courtyard development and operation and function of that in the long term. Just to understand, I, I, it's a little bit gray to me, and maybe Commissioner Woods or, or Um, just to understand, I, I, it's a little bit gray to me and maybe Commissioner Woods or, or Liza would weigh in too from a park's perspective, but um, if one's walking by um, the connection into that court courtyard, does one feel encouraged to come in? Uh, does one feel like if they were to enter it, uh, they don't feel comfortable and it really does read as part of the residential community that's there. Uh, if that's the case, fine, is, but is, is that okay from a park's perspective, I guess? Um, not having that as a readily, as a highly recognizable, accessible, open space appendage off of the streetscape there.
Gene, I might um, draw a reference to Harvard Yard, which is a good proxy. So it's very typical of what you'd find elsewhere on campus where there is an architectural threshold condition that implies you're sort of crossing from a true public zone into a secondary zone. But there's no means of physically excluding the public. So we do certainly want it to feel like a, a welcome, but it's designed purposely to serve the resident population. I don't know if that helps clarify, but it's ve- it's very similar to other courtyards at Harvard University Housing Projects.
Is there, Jason, is there a physi- is there a physical gateway that you pass through to go into the space? There is not.
No, so we've used some landscape elements, some boulders, some trees to just create a narrowing at the entrance to the courtyard, but there's no means of gate or exclusion.
Correct. I think that that's why you see the configuration of the pathways at that sort of like the proximity with the sidewalk. Um, they, they, they sort of serve as a threshold. There's boulders, there's trees or vegetation that, that is trying to serve that function. Rather than a fence. Yeah.
I don't have a question so much as a comment that I appreciate the specific benefit towards um, restoring and caring for the trees on the, in the park area. And also the idea of um, transplanting trees to other parts of your campus as opposed to just cutting them down. I think that's a, a really wonderful benefit and I just wanted to uh, mention that I appreciated it.
Thank you.
The work the city has done and the Parks Department has administered at Smithfield has been quite heroic just over the past five and six years. So um, we, we appreciate that too. And, you know, naturally, especially with the heat and the dryness, two summers ago, there was some die-off and we're um, thrilled to be able to um, take care of it that way.
Reverend, any questions at all that you have?
No, actually, people keep asking my questions before I'm about to. So I think um, we've gotten uh, quite a bit of information.
Uh, Liza Meyer, anything uh, for landscape architect that we took cover?
A couple um, quick things. The um, question from Mark, maybe to start, the the tree replacements in the park, those trees will have a two-year warranty per park standard. And is there any maintenance associated with those trees after the warranty period or is it just for the warranty period?
I think the way we wrote it in the cooperation agreement was, was a standard warranty. So I'd want to just double check on what the actual duration of a standard warranty is. Um, Harvard has not, um, we've never discussed or committed to maintaining the trees in the park, but as far as all of the new trees on the site, including the sidewalk trees adjacent to the project, we are um, required in an agreement to take care of those.
Yes. And then um, the timing of the Flex Fund, is there a sense of when the next RFP for distribution of those funds will come out?
Um, I, uh, so I, I wish I could just say yes and tell you the date. The BPDA administers that RFP process and ultimately votes on it. Um, I would like to think that in the first half of this calendar year, um, there's a lot of motivation and the timing is right now. We just actually finished a smaller annual grant cycle, so um, it would be very natural to open up the Harvard Alston Flex Fund RFP in the foreseeable future, which is to say the next, the coming months, but we are reliant on um, BPDA to open it up. Harvard does administer some other grants, but this has not been one of them. We participate on an executive committee. So once the grant cycle is opened up, I and um, a couple of my colleagues from Harvard are, ha- help the administration and the public meetings that um, deliberate on the um, on the grants. So we're, we're, um, I, I hope we're right around the corner from a, a very clear answer with a date of when it's opening and closing.
Um, and then one last comment, just sort of building off of the question that Assistant Commissioner Ballinger raised around the shadow impacts. I think that I would expand a little bit on that in that parks is spending quite a bit of time right now trying to really wrestle with that question, which I think is an important question of like what, you know, we see shadow impacts, what does that mean for land and what does that mean for park users? And I would say that um, those morning hours are significant hours of park use time, that that's a time of day where people who work are able to be in the park. Um, people who commute and might use the park as part of their, their, you know, daily flow will be moving through that space um, in the summer when we're really faced with our hottest time of year, the morning hours are an, an essential time to be able to be in the park to enjoy that environment. So shadow impacts in the morning hours and while the, the shadow studies do show the shadows off the site at around noon, the shadows are on the site until just before noon, right? So we're really looking at a long, a, a fairly prolonged stretch of shadow um, on this section of Smithfield. And we'll know more. I think um, we have a, a shadow study RFP out right now, and I hope that that work will um, really educate all of us on, on this question that's so foundational to parkland. Um, so I appreciate you bringing that up, Gene, and um, we'll be able to, to continue to discuss this on projects um, moving forward. That's all I have.
Liza, I was wondering if you feel we should, I don't know what the timeline for that shadow study is, but should we table this project until we get more information from the shadow study?
I, you know, it's not that imminent. We're, we just have the RFP out right now and I think the study will take a year. So I think it's something that it would be great to already have that information. We don't, um, and so we'll just have to um, you know, as we learn over the course of that project, I think we can integrate the information in our thinking and our, in our um, feedback related to projects, but we won't have a finished product, so to speak, from that um, for quite some time. So we'll have to be sort of patient.
Okay, thank you. And I, um, we provided um, pretty early in the regulatory process, a complete shadow study that did include the mechanicals that uh, for every season um, in many times a day related to this specific project. So the shut, the status of, the, excuse me, the shadows of this specific proposal have been studied meticulously within the course of the uh, regulatory process. We, we do have a video that depicts the shadows as well, um, if that's um, desirable. It's a, it's a minute or two long, so I don't want to um.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners before we open to public comments on this project?
Just quickly noting uh, that I think the project description, which is very comprehensive, references a one-year warranty period on the trees. So we may want to reconcile that to be in sync with what the Boston Parks requirements are. Thank you.
Yes, and as I, I think Liza mentioned, we do currently have a two-year um, for all of our trees. So that would be great, um, if Harvard would go to the standard two years.
Yeah, we could certainly revisit that.
Um, with that, if anyone has a public comment on this project at one seventy-five North Harvard Street, we ask that you raise your hand and we'll now be able to take public comments just on this uh, item on the agenda.
Hey, I'm going to unmute for Karen. She's the first on, raise her hand.
Right.
Go ahead, Karen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Karen.
Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Karen Monty Brodeck, President of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. Um, I, this is the first I've seen this particular project. I spend my time following the twelve million projects going on around the Emerald Necklace, but I wanted to say that I'm very glad that I know that the Parks Department has now issued an RFP um, and is working to develop a shadow policy because it is a very challenging. Only two of Boston's parks, the Common and the Garden, have specific shadow limitations. All of the other projects go through this type of process. And as you can tell, it is very challenging to try and balance all of the things that we want with, of course, the health of our parks and the health of the people that use them. So um, that, those funds were provided a year ago. Um, I'm excited that the RFP to bring the consultant on has happened now. I really like that to go as quickly as possible so it could inform projects that are um, going on right now. There are two others uh, at least along the necklace that we are actively reviewing literally this week. Um, thank you very much for your time and consideration, commissioners.
Any other members of the public have a public comment on the one hundred and seventy-five North Harvard Street project?
Ryan, we can't hear you.
Any other member of the public have a comment on the one hundred and seventy-five North Harvard Street project? I'm seeing none. Shauna, are you seeing the same?
I'm seeing the same, but there is a comment or a question in the chat from Louis. It says, what is the value of a five-point-three-million public fund in twenty-two-four dollars? We can't hear you, Ryan.
Thank you for pointing that out. Um, any other questions or comments for public testimony?
Nope, none that I can see.
With that, I bring it back to the commissioners. Um, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this project.
I'll second it.
We, we have a motion from Commissioner Epperson with a second from Commissioner Birdseye. And the motion is a vote to approve one seventy-five North Harvard Street, including a hundred South Campus Drive, adjacent to Smith Playground in Alston. All in favor, please say aye.
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 You opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much uh, for your time on this project.
Thank you, commissioners.
Good to hear.
Okay. Uh, as we get into the next item on the agenda, if anybody who is a presenter for the Boston Unity Soccer Partners proposal, if you just raise your hand, so we're able to promote you to a panelist as we're removing the panelists from the previous project.
Hi, this is Tamara. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Yes.
Oh, great. Um, I can't turn on my video, but um, Lea Grossman from our team is going to be putting up the presentation.
Great, we'll be with you in one second. I'm just trying to get it running still.
I think also Phil Carabori is, seems to be unable to uh, get that raise hand. But he is a presenter as well.
I just promoted him. He's going to be in, he should be in shortly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Or Shauna, Brian? His hand raised. Looks like the power side had some. Great. Um, so for this um, my uh, item of other business, I will have um, Carrie announce it in a second. But it is a presentation, so there will be no vote today taking on this project. It still has to go through uh, the BPDA process and will be coming back to us in future months, but we thought it was important to get a preview in front of the commissioners, in front of the community of where um, this proposal currently stands and uh, get this, a first glimpse at some of the designs. So with that, I will pass it off to Carrie Marsh Dixon to announce the next item on the agenda, please.
This is a presentation on Boston Unity Soccer Partners, or I apologize if it's partnership. Uh, proposal for White Stadium on assessing parcel number one-two-zero-three-four-eight-six-zero-zero-one, which is separate from and surrounded by Franklin Park, which is in Roxbury, Dorchester, Matapan and Jamaica Plain.
Thank you very much. And uh, we will pass it off to your team now for the presentation. We just asked that you please introduce yourself as you're presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner and the other members of the Commission for inviting us here today. I am Jennifer Epstein. I am the lead owner for Boston Unity Soccer Partners. We are grateful for this chance today to share with you our vision and plans for the renovation and revitalization of White Stadium for the benefits of the students of Boston, the communities around the stadium, Franklin Park users and visitors, and Boston's next championship sports team. Several members of our ownership group and team, as well as representatives from our design and development partners are also here today to help present and answer questions. I um, should note, as you look at the renderings on these first two slides, you will note the image images shift from a game day evening vision where uh, there are seats temporarily covering the track to a daytime, non-game day vision uh, with the seats removed and the track exposed. We, you can go back, sorry, to the last slide. The daytime rendering, Lea. We're very excited about what this opportunity represents for the city of Boston. We envision a partnership with the city, the Boston Public Schools, Franklin Park and the communities around the park that improves our neighborhoods by providing increased amenities in the park, enhanced community spaces, new jobs focused on the local community, significant improvements physically and programmatically for our Boston schoolchildren, and a thoughtfully expanded, community-oriented venue that can be enjoyed by all Bostonians. This public-private partnership will be unlike any other in professional sports. Next slide, I'm going to invite Tamara Roy from Stantec.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, yeah, this is Tamara and with me is Chris Bridle, um, also from Stantec Land Landscape Architecture. And our other um, team members will be introducing themselves as they come in. Um, not going to go through all of the text on these pages of the project narrative, just the highlights. So um, we have our development program here, which is a little under sixty thousand uh, square feet. Um, no proposed onsite parking spaces. Our building height um, is approximately forty-five feet and the FVR point two-seven. Next. And we go here and just give an overview of some of the design languages we are working with um, on this site. The fencing, the digital scoreboard, public realm improvements and sustainable design. Most of these are covered in their visual presentation, so I won't dwell on them. Next. As well as accessibility and site access, I will note that we are bringing on board a consultant for universal accessibility and really doing a brainstorming and visioning with them about how to think more about accessibility, not just from the point of view of elevators um, but uh, and bathrooms, but more broadly. Um, that's something we've heard from the community. Uh, the benefits, we will go through in, in other slides briefly. Next. And then there's some detail here from our civil engineers on uh, stormwater management. Um, again, not, not something we're going to dive into deeply today, but know that we are working on that aspect of the project as well as the utilities plan, which is very much in process at the moment. Um, the construction management plan, we have just begun to begun to speak with uh, the contractors to try to make a logistics plan and go through that. So we, we, it's really early to present that, but we will, we will present that when the, when the time is right. Next. I'm going to pass it back to Jen.
Thanks, Tamara. This slide uh, introduces the lead ownership group. We are a diverse female-managed ownership group where forty percent of the invested capital was invested by investors of color, including both black and brown investors and ninety-five percent by women. We have been very intentional in thinking about how our team can be, can have broad positive impact for our city and its residents well beyond the twenty game days that our team takes the pitch in White Stadium. We share a strong belief that sports brings communities together and presents a unique opportunity to forge connections across neighborhoods, race, gender and economics. brings communities together and presents a unique opportunity to forge connections across neighborhoods, race, gender, and economics. White Stadium is also a connector of communities, and our hope is that this stadium redevelopment project can serve as a catalyst for positive change. We are focused on ensuring that both economic and community benefits of the project will flow into the surrounding neighborhoods. Outside of our lease payments to the city for the use of the stadium and the area called The Grove, which we will give more details about further on in the presentation, we intend to create a Boston Unity Community Fund with an annual contribution of five hundred thousand dollars that will primarily benefit Franklin Park and the communities around it. We will structure a community advisory committee to help guide our grant making decisions. Next slide, please. With this project, BPS use of White Stadium overall will be more, not less, than it currently is and in better facilities. It is a remarkable and exciting model that will turn this venue into the first sports venue in the country that will co-house a professional sports team and a public school athletics program. By sharing in White Stadium, we will be able to develop internship, mentorship, and scholarship programs with and for BPS students. We will introduce world-class female athletes and capable innovative female executives. It will be a great academic and empowering model. I should also note, because I know that there has been concern about community access, that White Stadium will not be our main training facility or corporate headquarters. Those will be located elsewhere. So the vast majority of field time will remain with schools. Next slide, please. We appreciate the surrounding community's passion and commitment to preserve and enhance their neighborhood and their spaces, and we are dedicated to a collaborative process. This slide reflects the many meetings. Actually, I'm noticing there's even been more since this slide was uh printed up, but the many meetings we have had to date with organizations and people connected to the park and the surrounding communities to familiarize ourselves with the priorities, concerns, and goals of the stakeholder stakeholders. Our team has carefully noted all suggestions offered by members of the community throughout this public process. In recent weeks, we have been developing a tracking system that will help us make sure that all of this valuable feedback is recorded, considered, and ultimately addressed. We intend to make a summary of this process available on our website, along with regular updates on some of the major themes we are tracking. It is a top priority that we are a good neighbor for the long term, and that starts now during the planning and extends to the construction and ultimately the operation of White Stadium. Slide, please.
We're now gonna be I can take over from here. Yep, this is our, yeah, sure, Jen. Um, so this is our agenda. Uh, moving forward, we're really gonna try to go fairly quickly through it. It's a lot of information. Um, some of which has been presented publicly and and some not, so we're not sure who on this call has been to which meeting, so we're gonna try to give an overview. Next. So, I mean, Chris Bridle, would you like to jump in here?
I'll take this one here. Thanks, Tamara. Um, this is really just to say that the use of the site and the stadium is in line with the original intent of the site by the original designer Frank Law Olmstead, in that this was intended to be for recreational use for the for the city's uh schoolchildren, um and we believe that the function is continuing today. I'll hand it back to, I believe, Jen.
Thank you. Throughout our consideration of new programming and design, we have started with the recognition that White Stadium is a city asset with a rich history. It's been a real joy when speaking with the community to hear the retelling of the storied athletic rivalries, epic concerts, community festivals, meaningful gatherings, and treasure day-to-day use and access. We appreciate the range of connection that the stadium has fostered, and we want to restore and build upon that legacy. Next slide, please. To capture all the history and the stories of White Stadium, we have been uh working with our design team at ways to chronicle the years of moments through art, design, and digital media. Slides. Uh, just I I get this slide really is as as a reminder, under the framework of the RFP, we will be leasing The Grove area, which you can see down at the south uh southern portion of your of the the image and the West Grandstand, and we will license the field and the East Grandstand on game days. The city will be responsible for rebuilding the field and the East Grandstand. Next slide, please.
So we are very aware that we have these two time periods um in the park, uh the Frederick Law Olmstead um approach to the naturalistic landscape, um all of these really phenomenal um sort of containers of experience and then opening up a vistas, et cetera. Um, so those those are important in our design work as well as the mid-century um details and approach to White Stadium, um which is Art Deco and Bauhaus. Next. And so we are taking um some of those elements as inspirations for our um changes that we're doing to White Stadium. This is the architectural page, and next I'll hand it off to Chris Bridle for the landscape.
Thanks, Tamara. And and as Tamara mentioned, you know, we see this area surrounding the site as being able to blend the two eras together, both the modernist era of the of the stadium and the naturalistic uh the pastoral aesthetic from uh Olmstead and and using the materials and and uh within our site or around our site to blend those two languages together. We also want to quickly highlight that we believe we're in line with the vision uh set forth in the Franklin Park Action Plan and that we're uh in compliance or or in line with in step with the major key points of the action plan to make connections and uh to promote pedestrian and bicycle use, to clarify movement um and to make connections between the existing facilities and amenities, including the Overlook and Playstead in immediate uh relationship with our site to obviously create a magnet destination, which this, of course, is, and will in uh enhance the program, uh we think significantly within the within the park. And lastly, and maybe mostly important, is to enhance and protect the existing parkland and ecosystem, including all the heritage trees and um and the ecosystem surrounding the park.
And we will go into more detail about the Franklin Park Action Plan in our February twelfth uh public meeting on White Stadium, um as that is really the focus of that public meeting, but right now we were trying to keep this brief. So we're gonna go next into the site plan evolution.
Thanks, Tamara. And I'll I'll go through this quickly, but we wanted to show the sequence of of the site. This shows our site overlaid before the Olmsteadian Park uh was built, and it shows Walnut Street there on the left. Continue, we can no go to the next side.
Av, yes.
Right, Walnut Ave, sorry. Um, and you can see uh there that Walnut Ave is is still there, but the introduction now of the Olmsteadian plan with these lovely organic swoopy paths and the overlook there uh immediately west of The Grove, and we're taking inspiration by the overlook uh that is informing our our design and its relationship. Next slide. Here we're showing the introduction of a few more paths that that were not in the original plan uh but are still in our plan uh in adjacent to the to the Grove. And here the introduction, of course, of White Stadium um on the Playstead, and and it's interesting to see that we think that the grading of the Playstead was adjusted um when this building was implemented and and built. Next slide. Now overlaying our proposed geometry onto the site, onto the existing plan, and you can see that our new sort of back lines are taking cues from the from the organic forms of the overlook and from the Olmsteadian design. Next slide. Now I'll hand it back to Tamara here.
Thanks, Chris. So this um this slide shows our limit of work in red um within the George White Trust line in blue, um and that includes the components of the West Grandstand, The Grove, as well as the the landscape around it in order to um improve those paths, connect to existing paths and and um respond to the various program elements and um also crowd movements of the stadium. On outside of that line is uh the Boston Public Schools um improvements. Next. And again, I'm sorry, that that is an older plan, so um it's been updated and we will continue to update as the BPS design evolves. Chris.
Thank you. So this is to show quickly the all the existing trees. They're shown with dashed lines, and they're showing the critical root zones of all the existing trees. We're showing here five black circles or darker circles that are showing the trees that we propose to remove. Most are smaller trees right immediately adjacent to the building, which we believe on creating huge value. The larger tree is a Norway maple uh which we may actually, as we progress the design, we may be able to um to keep, but at this moment, we're showing it as being removed as we may need to adjust the grades immediately surrounding that maple, but as we all know, the Norway maple is invasive, so it may be a midway decide to remove it anyway. Next slide. This shows um the relationship of existing and proposed paths, and we know that obviously we're increasing the amount of hardscape uh in the Grove uh and um but but this is really to say that we're doing it mostly for or entirely for safety and egress and for obviously the function of the Grove. We intend to have uh festivals and events within the Grove, and we require some hardscape in order to do that. But of course, as we progress this design, we will endeavor to reduce the hardscape even further, and we've actually been doing that. As the design has been evolving, we've been reducing the amount of our of hardscape within the design. Next slide.
So we've been working with our lighting designer um to set some overall goals um for the light levels. We've been asked about that in the public meetings. Um, we know that we need a certain amount of light um for FIFA and National Women's Soccer League requirements for our twenty games out of the year. Uh, but beyond that, we want to make sure that the lighting is put on dimming um to avoid overlighting. Um, and then we are looking to um to parks and also the uh Franklin Park Action Plan, Master Plan, to coordinate the overall path lighting so that getting to and from the stadium um is is safe and secure. Next. And again, um we've heard quite a bit about uh birds and the ecology of the park, and we are continuing to um be consulted on those those issues, and we will we'll continue to try to connect that to our lighting design and and other issues of noise, et cetera, in the stadium. Next. The project is working under the Specialized Stretch Energy Code. Um, so it is will have all electric building systems, um and we're exploring solar on the roof of the canopy. We will have low-flow fixtures, um and we're targeting lead gold um and the stormwater. Um, Chris, maybe you wanna talk about that for a minute? Or a second?
Sure.
Since we're moving on.
Very quickly, yeah, the the stormwater we know, you know, is is an issue for the site. It's it's inundated at a low sort of a low level in a bowl, really. Uh, within the topography of the park, and so we know we need to deal with uh moving water out of certain areas, uh including The Grove. Uh, we progressed the design, and we'll be enhancing and and obviously designing the the stormwater system in order to deal with that as we move forward.
Next.
Good morning.
Mike, Mike.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Michael Green with BHB. I am going to discuss the project noise impacts. So the most significant change to stadium usage is the introduction of the Boston Unity Soccer Team, so we are focusing on Boston Unity Game Days and in particular, noise generated by the crowd and noise from the sound system. The sound of the crowd, especially during key moments like goals, can abruptly fluctuate from quiet to enthusiastic cheering. So due to the spontaneous nature of noise, it is not feasible to directly control the crowd noise. However, there are ways in which we are mitigating and minimizing this noise. As mentioned previously, the proposed schedule is limited to approximately twenty games per year between March and November, primarily during weekend afternoons and evenings to help minimize any late-night noise. With this limited schedule, there will be no sustained adverse impact surrounding noise-sensitive areas. The sound system will be designed in order to provide clear communication to attendees while minimizing excessive noise spillover into the surrounding areas. There are ways we plan to minimize noise from the sound system. The first is with volume control. We plan to implement controls on volume levels and will monitor the these in real time during events. And the second is by utilizing directional speakers to contain sound within the stadium. This will help minimize breakout into the surrounding areas. The design will ensure that noise from the sound system is in alignment with the Massachusetts Noise Policy and the City of Boston Noise Ordinance, aiming to ensure noise noise levels remain within acceptable limits. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. Jen, are you able to take this one? Or Bill?
Can you hear Bill? Nope, he was trying. Can Bill?
Yeah.
You can come to my screen if you want.
I think perhaps, I mean, this slide, maybe we will get to it some more detail than Parks needs today, so maybe really keep it high level. Hi, Bill.
Hi, sorry. Uh, somehow I wasn't uh in uh connected to the presentation. Um, we intend to operate the stadium on game days and The Grove during the calendar year at a high professional level with um proper management and deep organizational support. Um, for game days, we will develop and execute on a game day operational plan focusing on uh proper preparations, setup, and community engagement prior to the events, uh coordination with neighbors, public safety and city departments, uh security, access, and transportation prior to and after the event, and um also a terrific fan experience during the game for all fans, including uh the youngest, the oldest. Focus on non-English speakers and a special focus on uh disabled access. And then also um uh with um a real focus on the end-of-event operations, including security, cleanup, and fan dispersment uh uh which will very much uh include resetting the park. Uh, next, uh. So the scoreboard, the video scoreboard uh is a key element uh to the fan experience during game days. We have developed a double-sided video scoreboard that can provide a terrific expand or fan experience during game days that integrates The Grove into the stadium, the overall stadium through this media. The video scoreboard will also be an integral part of the BPS athletic uh experience during its events, allowing for an elevated pro-level presentation of their games and competitions as well as graduation and other special events. The video scoreboard's steady-state existence will be turned off and turned on for events. In the case of the scoreboard facing The Grove, it is intended to be used for special events uh and not on a daily basis. We envision it working to support already existing events in the park, like a good example is Bamfest and other events where the projection of acts and information will improve the overall experience of the event and integrate The Grove uh into the actions. It can perform uh perform as public announcement board and also to enhance the experience of the event itself. We also see the video scoreboard activated during Grove events such as movie nights or jazz concerts, but otherwise, again, it will be turned off. We expect that it will be on on an average of six to ten hours a week during the season. And and less so uh, you know, during the winter. Um, next slide.
Great. Let's move on to the West Grandstand. Really brief discussion of the West Grandstand, just to understand the scope. Uh, we are keeping the existing clamshell wall. We call them the clamshell wall. Um, it is a poured-in-place uh concrete part of the nineteen forty-nine structure. The spaces behind it are are really not able to be used um for the program. Um, it's not accessible at all. It doesn't have modern MEP um or any kind of amenities, and it has bleacher seats um which uh National Women's Soccer League requires bucket seats. National Women's Soccer League requires bucket seats. But we do um, really love and appreciate this part of the project and are looking to make sure that that fans and other stadium goers um, are able to, you know, learn about it and learn about the history of it as well. Next. So here you can see um, the yellow line says the boundary of the existing clamshell wall, and we are our our goal is to keep the um, the new seats um, sort of extending horizontally in a curving bowl shape reminiscent of that curve. Um, and keep its height fairly low so that when you are approaching it um, at eye level, it's harder to see the the canopy and the new um, project beyond. But as I said, also, the architecture is is um, trying to blend um, the the Bauhaus and Art Deco um, parts of the project with with a new, the needs of a new stadium. Next. And this is a conceptual section through the the project. Um, we had mentioned that on non-game days, the area to the bottom right will be the track exposed and used by Boston Public Schools. But here it is shown in its game day um, scenario where there are mobile bleachers and decks put over the track in order to extend the stadium to reach toward the pitch. We have a uh, four story building behind the clamshell wall, of which we are working um, actively with landmarks or will be working within the subcommittee to make sure that we're really telling the stories um, of that clamshell wall and and having folks really enjoy its experience as they climb that curving stair up to the top and get to our treetop lounge. Next. And here are some plans. This is the ground floor. Um, we are using the the historic red doors in the center. Folks to come in, have access to elevators, stairs and restrooms, the tunnel club and the gold areas are all the amenity spaces. And the pink and gray are the sort of team spaces and back of house. As we go up the levels, um, again, you get an open concourse on the second floor. We go up the stairs or the elevators, um, get to this the concourse with food and beverage um, and more restrooms. Next. Um, a sort of mezzanine level with more services. Next. And then the upper level, that treetop lounge. Next. And hand it over to Chris to talk about the Grove.
Thanks, Tamara. So this is just to quickly show some evolution of our design. We originally showed this landform idea in the RFP response. And a lot of this sort of DNA of our thinking is is still there in our design, but we've believed we've developed the design uh, in a positive direction, opened up the design with comments from both parks and BPDA and landmarks. Um, so I think we're moving in the right direction because the next slide. This also shows uh, the intended events that we believe will occur within the stadium and the Grove, festivals and winter activities, movie nights uh, and things like that. If we go to the next slide. This shows uh, some precedence in the Boston area, the lawn on D, the Trillium uh, Beer Garden and the Rose Kennedy Greenway activities. Um, we believe the Grove is sort of a analogous to these types of activities, and we hope to have these things happen also uh, within our Grove site. Next slide.
These are some of our early sketches, yep, from last fall, just looking at making sure that the design of the Grove was flexible enough that it could really host a variety of different programs, and we're just going to very quickly go through each of these. Next. Right? So when it is game day, we have food trucks, we have merchandise and security tents around the perimeter. We're looking at a central kids soccer play area with picnic tables and a lot of space for family friendly activities. Next. And just to give folks a sort of visual of what that might be, you can see the food trucks and the and the kids playing and the um, outdoor picnic tables. Next. Right? And then there's a possibility where we can really get a lot of folks in here for for um, movie nights and other things, other community events where we have a central picnic blanket bear air blanket area in the middle, surrounded by folding chairs and with some of the mobile seating um, that we're using on the end lines um, during the soccer games, being moved here to even provide some nice sightline raised seating. Next. Right? So something like this, yoga, some performances, some movie nights, um, all sort of on the, what we call the horseshoe shaped open lawn. Next. Then for markets or festivals, we think we can provide this nice circular movement um, of tents that people just walk around. And there's kids and and play areas in the center and lots of food and all kinds of fun market um, market programs. Next. Right? Something like this. Um, other things that we can connect to in terms of maybe things that already exist, but are looking for a little bigger um, home. Next. And then lastly, thinking about activating this in winter and being able to have some pop up shops, shops and also use our light poles when we take down the canopy structures um, and just use them as potential lighting um, almost as as trees in that space, along with fire pits and heat lamps. Next. And something like this, right? So very, very welcoming to the community and to the public. Um, that is what our goals are for the Grove. Next.
So we're going to walk you uh, quickly through uh, an evolution of the Grove design. This is showing our previous design that we presented, I believe, to you last time, and then we're going to show you a couple more. Two more options that Tamara, if you want to elaborate on.
Nope, you can keep going. I think we have, we should really go try to wrap it up by 11:30, and we still have the transportation section, so.
Sounds good.
Just to say that there's two options here. This is our previous design. Next, where it was a land form. Um, and we had a lot of um, critique on that, so we are now sort of containing that to building number two as an organic form, which just provides us with the program needs that we we have for the Grove. Next. Again, so just a small rounder object, keeping with our narrative of curving organic shapes um, within the park. Next. And we have another version, which is a greenhouse, thinking about the narrative a little bit differently of a building you might see in a park. Um, next. Same program, same size, um, but in more of a a glassy object, sits to the side toward the overlook. Next.
This talks a little bit about the 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 reasons behind uh, the building, certainly the the organic form building. And again, we want to emphasize this relationship with the overlook. Uh, the organic shapes of Olmstead's design, I think, is then relayed into this organic form building. So if there's the next slide. It shows an existing section through the overlook. Um, and then if we go to the next slide, you'll see proposed organic form building. And again, it's it's inspired by the forms of the of the overlook, and you can see there on the top right, the organic shape of this building. This shows the greenhouse building in the same section. Um, it it has a auxiliary storage space at the back, and then it opens up to the Grove facing uh, east. Next slide. Wanted to quickly show you the existing views that we see today in this intermediate path. The overlook is immediately behind us with the big uh, sort of pudding stone wall behind us. We're looking directly out to the stadium. You can see the stadium peeking through the trees there. Now on the right, behind the undergrowth and the understory is is the Grove space. Next slide. This shows a similar view. Now we're in the tunnel of the overlook, looking immediately out to the Grove, and you can see the stadium there on the left. This is taken in the winter. So obviously, it's a little bit more visibility through the understory. Next slide. This shows the organic form building, um, picking up on the modernist verticality of uh, of 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 some of the details that we're showing, both in the stadium, but also in the fence lines surrounding the Grove. Next slide. And then this shows the same view again with the greenhouse building. And then shows the auxiliary building at the back there. Next slide. This is now on top of the overlook. We're at the northern end of the overlook, but looking back at the stadium and obviously in the summer, there's virtually nothing. You can see either the stadium or the Grove through the undergrowth. Next slide. And then this is one of the vantage points, actually, where you can see a little bit more of the Grove, so we wanted to show you this. This is still on the overlap, but this is now the southern end, looking back at the Grove. Next slide. And you can see the organic form again of the building and the fence lines picking up that details from the building as well. Next slide. And the same with the greenhouse building. Next slide. We also wanted to show you um, our thoughts with materiality, picking up obviously on the existing materiality of the Olmstead Park with with the pudding stone walls, with the granite cobbles, with uh, granite treads and the asphalt uh, and ledge that you see around the park. And then on the right hand side, we believe our palette is sort of picking up on both the Olmsteadian language of natural colors and materials, but also the modernist detailing of um, of the stadium. And so blending those two things together. Next slide. Here we're showing your intent for our section of the of the fence lines surrounding the stadium, which we hope to coordinate with the other team and make sure this is cohesive. But again, picking up on that vertical detail uh, and making sure that these gates will open up, creating this wonderful uh, welcoming uh, entries into the stadium. Next slide. Here we're showing the fence line, the proposed fence line. This is uh, the closed condition that will happen during the evening when when the Grove will need to be shut for uh, for security. Um, obviously, again, we're picking up again on the the verticality of the fence lines. Next slide. And we and we hope the fence lines uh, will be planted. We we are planning to plant shrubs and vines to make sure they're part of the landscape. This is showing um, the open condition. Uh, sorry, this is still the closed condition. We'll go to the next slide. This is showing the open condition. Uh, these are the egress points into and out of the Grove, and during the day, we would we would love this to be very welcoming, again, with the fence lines spinning open and creating these lovely open uh, welcoming uh, moments surrounding the Grove. Next slide. This is showing an event situation where we would have, again, the fence lines would be open, very permeable. Uh, but we would also have ticketing opportunities at the south, east and northwest of the Grove. Next slide. And I think I'm handing over to HSH now.
Morning, everyone. Uh, you could skip through the first three slides right as you're doing it. This is just showing where our shuttle buses would be coming from satellite parking, so it's all outside the park. Okay, through the the next, the next two are shuttles from T stations from Jackson Square and Forest Hills. Go ahead and go ahead. So then now getting into the park, um, you know, the big changes since our previous public meetings, which we we discussed in the BPDA process last last couple of weeks, is inside the park, there will only be shuttle buses and no no TNC vehicles, no private vehicles. Um, on the right is the old circulation that we had been proposing, and then since then, the city of Boston has given us new directions, so we are no longer proposing the exit onto Seaver Street, and again, there wouldn't be any TNCs on Place dead or Pier Point Road uh, near the giraffe entrance. Next slide. What we were, so this just shows the TNC um, in the turnaround area by Humboldt Street on Seaver. Go ahead, next slide. So again, outside of the park, but adjacent. This is the shuttle routes that would be in the park, right? We were directed by the city to stick to Circuit Circuit Drive, and we would have shuttles coming in from the south and west, you know, essentially near Forest Hills from the Arbor Way and then turning around in the parking lot. And then same thing coming in from Blue Hill Avenue east and turning around. Um, again, these are only shuttles and and they'd be in and out of the park on the existing Circuit Drive. Next slide. The one new part would be shuttles coming from the north and west would be coming in and out on on Walnut. Um, these would be on, you know, pathways and roadways that are right now closed with gates, and they would continue to be closed by wood gates other than during our events. When they would be opened, um, again, just for shuttles to to make this loop and drop off and 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 pick up people. And as you can see, oh, this slide's fine too. Um, well, yeah, this one's better. Sorry. Um, as you can see, there's no no vehicles on in this slide shows, right? The blue line is pet and bike pets, and so there's no, none of our vehicles, including shuttles, would be on Pier Point near the giraffe entrance, really keeping the activities separate. The important part to note on here is there are some non ADA compliant um, paths in the park just because of their their slopes. And because of that, we would have to provide um, some sort of service for ADA people coming from either TNC or from the shuttle buses. Um, so but we can easily manage that with with golf carts and and smaller vehicles that, you know, wouldn't be um, you know, too big for the paths and certainly not a pedestrian uh, impact. And I think that was it. I tried to go as quick as I can. I don't think there's anything new, certainly not for the public, but I think even park staff has has seen all this before, but if not, happy to discuss any of it further if needed.
Thank you very much um, to my team, and thank you again to the Parks Commission for having us here today. That this concludes our presentation, and we're gonna open for um, questions. Uh, just, you know, in summary, uh, our view, the transformation of the stadium into a world-class sports facility presents an incredible opportunity for BPS student athletes, the communities around the park and our soccer club. We are building our team for Boston and the diverse communities represented here, and we thank the city for its leadership, and thank you all for your time today. Working together with the city and members of the community, we aspire to deliver a reimagined white stadium and an activated, flexible gathering space in the Grove that enhances our city and contributes positively to the vibrancy of Franklin Park.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Jennifer and the team. Um, following our Robert Tools of Order, what we will do is we'll have the commissioner be able to ask some questions. Um, and then we will go into public testimony. People are able to give some testimony and we'll capture all of that there. Um, again, this is a preliminary design review. A vote will not be taken today. That will come at a later hearing after the BPDA Board approval and process uh, goes through. Um, the Boston Unity Soccer Partners are focused, as they mentioned, on, I don't want to screw it up, the focus on the West Grandstand uh, area of the park uh, as well as the Grove area. So that is what they presented on today. Uh, Boston Public Schools and Public Facilities Department will be working on the east side um, area of the park, so um, that would come at a later um, meeting as well, but just so we focus with Boston Unity Partners here on the side that they're presenting on. Um, with that, I'll just highlight, you will be getting a letter from um, the Boston Parks Department from Liza Meyer, Carrie Marsh Dixon and the team, just flagging um, some things. And I will just highlight some of the things you'll be flagged. I won't go into detail because you go through them over. Um, just a shuttle drop off and pickup points and turnarounds. Just to, uh, they should all be defined for parks review so that any specific impacts of the program can be assessed in context for park uses. We just want a clear understanding of the access to the Grove and uh, how it relies on a new pathway, and that's a pathway that was called out in the Franklin Park Action Plan. Um, but just to make sure it has thoughtful alignment, so it doesn't constrict with athletic field layouts and the place dead, protects existing trees and provides connections. Um, that's there. Uh, access points when they're fully defined, just to provide a full site list and plan that shows the tie-ins with existing park pathways and saving. Um, utilities, I know they're still coming along, but when we have those, just a full site plan of the utility showing existing and proposed connections, the water, sewer, electrical drainage and fiber slash communications uh, that will be going on. Um, and obviously, tree protection, it's very important to us, so a comprehensive tree protection plan uh, for all trees on the property, uh, both whether it's BPS side or the public property, just so. We're following the New Cities Tree Ordinance that was passed earlier this year as a guide. And that's there. One thing that I want to call out that I know we've um, given some feedback before too, is that digital display board. I don't think as much we have an issue with the one facing I don't think as much we have an issue with the one facing inside the stadium. Just trying to make sure, you know, as state law doesn't allow digital advertising within 300 feet of a park. That is something that has come up on other projects, so if it's advertisements and things like that, that's facing into the park, the Parks Department is not a strong supporter of the digital display board facing into the park. There may be other ways to accomplish this by bringing in display boards during game days or having smaller video screens in the Grove area by some of the amenities that are there, that may still accomplish the same goal. But I know that's a comment that you'll see coming from the Parks Department, so just wanted to flag that. With that, I'm gonna pass it to my other commissioners because it looks like we have about 70 people on too that may want to share some public testimony. So Gene or Lisa or Rev?
I have some initial concerns about the transportation into the stadium area. If you're bringing 11,000 people in on a given game day, how easy is it for emergency vehicles to access that area? What impact it will it have to move that many people in and out by shuttle primarily? And would you consider using electric vehicles? That seems to me an enormous amount of exhaust to move that many people in and out of the park for a period of time when that's happening. I'm particularly concerned about security at getting people out in a timely manner if there were an incident that would require that.
Yes, I can, I can take those, this bunch of questions, so there is an area in the site behind the West Grandstand where that would be for emergency vehicles. So we do have a route for them to get in, you know, all the way into the Grove, even if they needed to. And that includes fire and ambulance. Shuttles, yes, we want them to be electric, but hard for us to commit to that now, it's, you know, it's two years out before there'll be an event, but that is the intent. And it's not the first time we've heard that comment, so it's certainly something that a lot of people are aware of. And then as for getting people in and out, just the the volume of them, there are events in the park already that are that are almost this size and there's no transportation management at all for those events, so you know, we feel very strongly that with our shuttle system that we would be able to move people in and out of the park better than what's already happening when when there's these larger events happening in the in the park currently.
I guess I had a few questions. Number one, it's just great to see this soccer team coming to Boston and probably adding to the legacy of Boston's history as a city of champions, so thanks for doing that, I'm a big soccer fan. Had a couple of questions, what's the percentage of jobs you expect to go to local residents? Do you have a sense of that yet?
Well, you know, we are, the goal of the project is a 50% WMB threshold in our contracts, we anticipate 500 jobs during, new jobs during construction and 300 during our steady state.
Okay. And in terms of the trees, I I think it was four trees you're gonna be removing, will you be replacing those on a two to one basis or one to one basis? What's the plan for that?
I don't think we we have the exact number of trees that we're proposing, but we are proposing quite a lot of new trees, so you know, I think we can safely say that, yeah. You know, significant net positive in tree planting.
Okay. And how do, I live in JP, not too far from the stadium, but I don't think I've ever seen an advertisement for a public meeting, so could you talk a little bit about how you advertise the public meetings?
The city has been managing the through the public meetings, so I don't know if anyone sent one here from the city actually on this meeting, but there is a website and, you know, that is something that is not the public meetings are not being managed by Boston Uni, we are participant alongside the city in those. We have been, we have been, you know, doing our own outreach and and you said you live in JP?
Yes.
So I I think that there has been reach out to the JP Neighborhood Council for a direct meeting and and I think that's still in the planning purposes, but
Okay.
And David, there's, there was a public meeting in January, there's another one I mentioned scheduled in February, and we also have an IAG for the project who also met in January and we can get you those dates.
They were parking and transportation meetings actually earlier as well.
Okay, yeah, I can't make the February 12th meeting in a way, but yeah, I'll follow up and see what I can get to.
I think Morgan McDaniel trying to further answer those questions, but perhaps she's, is she not enabled to comment? I see her in the chat.
Would you be able to add Morgan McDaniel over as a panelist? Morgan is a, I believe she's Deputy Chief of Operations, I don't want to get the title wrong, but very involved and has been a point person along the way on this project and it might be easier if she could just.
Okay, I.
Ryan, I couldn't.
Did they get Morgan to come over? Sorry, that's what the intention was.
Yes, I just promoted her.
Hey, everyone, I can't start my video, but thank you for promoting me to panelist, so I've been project managing the public-private partnership on this project over the last almost year since the RFP initially was being drafted. We've held four public meetings, one of those we had, we held twice, one in person and once virtual since July and all of those public meetings, we advertised by flyering in a radius around the park, we have shared out through neighborhood email lists and our White Stadium email list and City of Boston social media as well as informing, you know, our partner neighborhood groups and elected officials and asking them to spread the word. But, you know, I'm sure that we can always do a better job and happy to, you know, if you have any feedback on on ways we can better publicize, I'd be happy to incorporate that in the future, thank you.
Thank you. Couple other questions. Do you have a sense of what the maximum number of people would be on your busiest day? I'm just thinking about it's great that you're doing a shuttle, I'm just thinking about traffic spill over into some of the adjacent neighborhoods, whether residents have had a chance to talk about that issue and then potentially parking issues near where the shuttle pickup spots are. What will happen? Will there be spill over into those neighborhoods as well?
Yes, all right, Brian Bezel again, so we've had, we had two meetings in the fall, I was specific to transportation and parking, one was in person and one was virtual. And then we've had two meetings through the BPDA process in January where transportation was also discussed. So parking near the stadium, one of the biggest comments we received has been that, you know, obviously the neighborhoods directly near the the site would need to have resident permit parking enabled, at least for during game day events to prevent people from driving their private vehicle and just parking on a street near the near the facility. And then for the remote satellite parking that we'd have, they would all, when you buy your ticket to the game, you'd also have to buy your parking pass. So we'll know how many people are gonna be parking in each facility and it would be at a facility, you know, garages and parking lots. Not people just parking on a street and walking to a place to get on a bus, right? So all of that would be managed and it wouldn't be impacting the street parking near the satellite facilities either.
Okay, and the pathways within the project, will those be made of porous asphalt or previous concrete, just dealing with this, you mentioned you're dealing with stormwater on site, so is that part of your system? Or are you thinking about something else like cisterns or something like that?
It's probably going to be a a number of different measures, including, you know, permeable permeable surfaces and infiltration systems and upsizing, you know, pipework and storm stormwater network, so it's, it's gonna be a various different measures, I believe, to solve that problem.
Okay. That's, that's all the questions I had for now.
Yeah, maybe I could jump in for just a moment, please. And just a really quick question, so I have a better understanding of this, maybe either Commissioner words or Liza could could enlighten me. What level, and this is for the proponent too, partly, what level are the designs at and what level is it typically that BPRD would like to see before, you know, assigning their final comments and and so on and so forth?
Liza, you'd probably be best to address them.
Sure, I would describe these as conceptual so far and they're still looking at design options and showing us ideas. Because the Parks Commission typically reviews a project or reviews a project to the point of voting to approve or not approve after the BPDA board approval of said project occurs, typically we're seeing projects that have been brought to that level of design, there's still usually further design development and review by BPDA staff after board approval, but I would describe this project as not yet at the point that a typical project is when it comes neither for board approval or then subsequently Parks Commission approval.
Okay, that's great, and that's helpful, thank you, Liza. So I guess, you know, there's lots of, there's a lot of moving parts to this project clearly, and there's lots of details to be worked out and ironed out and I think as the representative of the proponent team has described, the design is continually evolving based on input received by the community, from the community and various agencies who have jurisdiction over the project. So I just wanted to make a couple of comments, really high level, not detail. And it's picking up on some of the comments that were made throughout the presentation that I gravitate to and it may not always be an empirical answer to my question, but I think these are just items to consider as you go through the design process and continue to interact with the community. And I'll just go through them, there were four or five points. More not less access for public schools, I think that's a critical component and one that has to be proved out and people need to have a comfort level with that as time goes on. Continuation of Olmsted's legacy and vision. Again, sort of a subjective statement, I respect that is part of the core mission of the team, but I think it's for all of us, again, to develop a comfort level that that's true based on the the plans that continue to evolve in line with the vision of the action plan, so that comment was made as well. I think from my perspective, that's another item that I just need greater understanding of and I suspect I'll be able to work through that as as details become clearer and the and the design continues to evolve. A couple of things that might be helpful to me, and that's kind of wrestling with Olmsted's legacy and the vision of the master plan that was just completed. Some of the renderings, and I realize that this project proponent is responsible for a portion of the project and that the city through a PFD is responsible for another portion of it. It's a little bit unorthodox not to be able to view a project of this nature in its entirety, and I realize that you're taking some liberties and actually reflecting what the full build out might look like, and I don't really know where the city side of the project stands, how detailed that has gone or so on and so forth, but one of the things I'm realizing is when I look at the overview for the full-blown project is having or wanting to have a better understanding of scale and massing. And I'd almost like to see some attempt to superimpose the existing configuration of White Stadium with the proposed build out in its entirety, just to get a sense of scale, existing versus scale and massing proposed, and I'm not sure if that's something that might be able to be done. And then putting it in the context of other facilities that support this women's league. You know, it'd be great to understand, is this bare minimum from a spatial perspective to to support what it needs to support, is it sort of middle road or is it in line with some of the largest complexes that have been developed to support folks in the teams in in this league? So those are just some high-level comments that I'd like to have a better understanding of as this process continues to unfold. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commissioners?
One thing that the previous comment brought to my mind is there a certain timeframe of lease from the team to the city or an expectation of us, you know, a timeframe that they will be in charge of it. What might happen at the termination of that lease or the end of it? You know, what would happen to keep the facility in good repair if if as Commissioner Bolinger said that, you know, if this is a small facility for the team, would they want to move on to a larger venue or create an entirely new venue? That may be impossible to answer at this point, but it did cross my mind that that might be something to think about, you know, what are the long-term effects of doing this work in this location?
So I will add a couple of others, just, I think people have gone through a number of them, but one of them I just want to lift up is the construction zone. And just trying to understand, it seems like a quite a substantial amount of the footprint that is currently available is being used sort of all the way up to the edges, and so just wanting to understand if there are if all of the construction can be contained within the zone or if there are going to eventually going to be requests to use, do staging at Place dead or do other pieces of things that might have impact on the use of the field, particularly we are in high use from the spring on, and so just really wanting to make sure that we're having some conversations around how construction would impact that. And then I think one other question is I I appreciated that it was addressed a bit, the relationship between the overlook and the and the grow, I think it's worth noting that we have recently released our RFQ to begin work around the overlook, the overlook is in the Franklin Park Action Plan the thing that people were most united and clear about. Now, there are other things, there's, I mean, there's so many things, but if I had to choose one thing that sort of seemed to get clear alignment, it would be the overlook and and really looking at restoring that and potentially even enhancing it, restoring it back to at minimum what it was when Alma Lewis was able to bring artistic programming back there, but then even to consider, might we amplify that and I think we should the challenge is that the timelines of what we're doing and you're doing may not perfectly fully aligned, but I do think it's a really important conversation to be having about how they will relate to each other. I think there are possibilities for the, for it to enhance and make it even stronger. There are also possibilities for it to be in conflict and make it challenging. And I think it's, that's all about design choices and coordination, and so I think that's a really, really important conversation to have because I think again, you know, the Franklin Park Action Plan is robust, but that is one of the places of of deepest alignment, and so I think it's, it is really important that that gets is done right, and so I think, I think figuring out what the lines of communication can be around that. The other thing, you know, I'll just lift up, just figuring out how what what work will be done to really get folks to not use their cars, and I think I just want to lift that up, I think we as a society unfortunately have become very addicted to our cars in ways that is not true necessarily in many other developed countries. In many other developed countries, they do do it differently. In Europe and Canada, people are used to leaving their cars home, but that has not often been the case in the United States, and so I'm excited about this and I think I I'd like to know with greater detail, what is going to be done to discourage people from driving, because I think just not creating the spaces will not be sufficient to prevent people from operating in the way they have become accustomed to happening, and so I'd like, you know, I know that this was a abbreviated presentation, but I would really love to know, what are the specific things, what are the models that you're looking to? uh, presentation, but I would really love to know, what are the specific things, what are the models that you're looking to in other countries or other parts of the of this country that will um help people to make those decisions that we want them to make and not just show up in the neighborhood and circle and circle and circle? Um, there are some things that have worked, even with the um, half marathon, for instance, that I've gone to where people really did on the whole take the shuttles. Um, but I think the question is, what are, what's going to be done to make sure that 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 cultural shift actually happens in this this case? Um, let's see, I think a number of the other questions were addressed, so I think I'll leave it there, sort of my two, a couple of key things.
Thanks, Chief. I think I'll hop in now um, and say that I'm very excited for all of the possibilities that this project can bring to the community. Um, most specifically, the opportunity to substantially revitalize White Stadium in a way that ties uh, future programming, so that we're actually investing uh, in community infrastructure and then also bringing some uses to continue uh, its impact on the neighborhood. I think, as the chief said, there are numerous questions. Um, and I think most importantly, as far as to hear from the community, which we're about to do shortly. Before we do, I have two, uh, I'll label them as concerns, but really they're areas where I need to hear more um, to better understand how this is going to move forward. Uh, first, I I'm concerned of how the we have separate tracks uh, between what the city is going to do with this site versus what this private group is going to do with this site. Um, and I I heard a couple of quotes, uh, hope to coordinate with the other team uh, and as B P S design evolves. So I'd like to encourage everybody to make sure they do work together and that the designs that are reviewed not only by this body and other bodies by the community, uh, that they're comprehensive, uh, they reflect each other so that everybody has the entire picture. Um, and then the other concern that I have is by the growth, and I'm I'm so excited by this opportunity. But I'm also concerned by the the potential of that area to become privatized beyond the twenty days where we're going to have active games. Uh, I personally view all of this area as public land, and I understand some of the days are going to require some exclusive use by others. That's understandable, especially weighing the the additional benefit that the city and the public are going to get out of this. But I'd like to make sure that we don't over privatize the growth. Um, so I'd I'd have a lot of questions about who will be programming that space. We talk about community events. Um, all these great things, but who's going to be the one to program it? Will be the city, will be the Parks Department? Or will it be a private group who's perhaps more focused on monetizing that? So I'd like to make sure that we maximize the public use uh, of the growth, because I see it as a as a wonderful last. So I'll leave it at that.
Anything else from the commissioners um, before? I do want to let our chief landscape Liza my higher comment. I know I um, stole a little thunder by mentioning some stuff, but Liza, I don't know if you want to talk about any proposed communication that we may have from the department um, for their review and things of that nature.
We'll provide comments during the Article eighty comment period and submit those later this week. So I think that's, you know, I think we should use this time for for public comment. Thanks.
With that, not seeing any other commissioners uh, having questions, we will go into public comment. We ask that you please um, raise your hand for any uh, public comment, and Shawna will uh, unmute you so you can speak. Really, this is public testimony, so please testify. It's not a back and forth question, the answer, so please make sure um, that you state your testimony and the commissioners are here to listen to it, so they can ask uh, future questions when So with that, Shawna, do you want to unmute the first person, please?
Okay, first person is Sam Gray. Go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much for this presentation. I'll be brief. Um, I'm excited about the the utility that this project is going to bring to local student athletes and and commerce that'll bring to the community. I'm a local area runner, uh, an athlete, and I just wanted to speak for the Franklin Park Cross Country Course, which many folks may not be aware um, is a very old and very prestigious um, course that runs um, around the stadium uh, and and the woods and the wilderness surrounding it. Um, this is a course that starts and ends on the fields, um, on the grove side of the stadium and wraps around the west uh, grandstand side multiple times, depending on what distance is being run. Um, it's competed on by every athletes of all ages from elementary through college and even professionals. Um, and is used as a regular training course and is claimed as a home course by many teams in the area. Uh, uh, my concern is that uh, this has nothing to do with the physical structures of the stadium, which look beautiful, by the way. This is only to do with the grounds and the pathways and the and the roads and the parking lots that might be created in the process. Um, I'm concerned that the um, that that the course might be obstructed in uh, in the course of of that design by trees, benches, fencing, curbs, um, and of course, um, excessive amounts of like hard surfaces, concrete paths or asphalt um, would be major, major disruption disruptions to this course. Um, just to give you a little bit of history on the course, it hosted the world champion, uh, cross country world championships in nineteen ninety-two. Um, on a yearly basis, it hosts many marquee events um, organized by Boston College, Suffolk University. Um, even brands such as Hoka, uh, Adidas, New Balance host uh, meets there um, on a uh, on an annual basis. And so I think um, the uh, this this course should be treated as as an asset um, to the project and something to be not only preserved, but maybe even beautified and embellished. And um, something that could um, draw even more high profile um, competitions to to the park and to the stadium and generate more commerce and so forth. Um, there are a lot of entities that would be happy to collaborate, such as the Catholic Memorial High School Coaching Staff, which I'm connected to, as well as I'm sure the Boston College and Suffolk University um, uh, track and cross country coaches who host major meets at the uh, on the course every year. And even the brands that I mentioned, perhaps Hoka, New Balance, um, Adidas, who host meets there, I'm sure that they'd be happy to collaborate and make sure that the course is not only preserved, but even perhaps improved um, to the benefit of this entire project. Thank you.
I just want to point out too, Joshua Champagne is on from Counselor Anderson's office. He joined us for the whole call. They did not see his note in the chat saying, so um, Counselor Anderson, the District Seven Counselor's Office uh, has been on the call and is still with. Shawna, next person on the to testify.
Okay, next person is Louis. Go ahead.
Morning. Thank you once again for the opportunity on to uh, to respond to this proposal. My name is Louis Alisa. I live at sixty-eight Seaver Street, um, about a hundred and thirty yards from the stadium. Um, I've been a resident here for fifty-two years, but I'm a founding member of the Franklin Park Coalition. So my involvement and engagement as president of the Garrison Trotter Naval Association, which has been involved for more than forty-five years is uh, pretty profound. And so with that, the questions I'm raising are ones that we've raised as a group and continue to raise. We're not sure how it is possible to intelligently access the plan or design when looking only at half of what is to be impacted. There's no existing graphics that clearly show the existing footprint of the Playstead and what will be the impacts of the proposed construction. There are no overlays that do that, and so it makes it very difficult to assess um, what the benefits are going to be or what the impacts are going to be. No indication of where the required parking for events would take place within the park and around the stadium. No clear indication of traffic flow and access to proposed staging areas along Seaver Street as it has been identified um, by the proponents. No graphic showing impacts on Playstead Road as it goes around existing stadium. That means from uh, the zoo entrance, um, the um, giraffe entrance around on the Playstead um, that for biking and roller skating that went around the White Stadium and went all the way to Alma Lewis and back around. There's a um, it's an area that the children forever have been utilizing. There's no clear indication how that will be impacted. Um, there's no indication at this point as to what will happen to existing basketball courts and uh, hardtop, flattop bacterias that are adjacent to the stadium. Um, I saw some plans um, that showed the tennis courts being preserved, but there's no real indication of how that's going to be impacted by the Grove or anything else that's being proposed and whether the so-called areas to be closed off will have impact on the public access to those um, to those tennis courts, which have been utilized frequently throughout the summer and early fall and early spring. Um, in addition, I've seen no design indication of what the track will look like. I saw some illustrations of what it was and what it is now, but no design that I've seen that shows what the track will look like, where the runoff areas are for the field events and things of that nature, all of which are a required part to having an active uh, you know, um, recreation and play space. Um, measures during as to the impact or integration of the standing and movements in the Playstead in Franklin Park and proposed activities of the soccer league. Um, we do quite a few activities that are annual that continuously come up um, in the stadium, but outside on the Playstead area. And some of the proposed activities um, or timing for the um, events will um, without a doubt, um, impact those programs that go late into the afternoon and early evening. Um, so there needs to be a discussion on how they integrate on the existing and standing programs to which the Park Department gives some permits to, and some are just community events that continue to take place there. And uh, and finally, I'm addressing the issues inside Franklin Park because as a community and as a butter, we have a number of other issues as it relates to parking, traffic management, uh, permit parking, traffic management, others, but for Franklin Park itself, uh, there's some major issues that have to be um, better exemplified in the proposal and identified. And I think as one of your commissioners said, it's very difficult to do. I think you have to see the full plan. It's hard to assess a full pie without half the ingredients going that's going into it. So I'm hopeful that um, part of what the Parks Department will be doing is getting indication of how uh, what is being proposed will integrate with what is existing now, and then um, you know, what is the possibilities for mitigating any um, negative, you know, impacts for those uh, who've used the place to park for so long? And uh, and we do welcome the idea of fixing up White Stadium, but we don't relish the idea of being completely uh, inundated with activities that makes life more difficult rather than more pleasurable. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Tara, you have the next person.
Okay, the next person is Karen. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm assuming it's me, Karen, but there are probably other Karens.
It is you, Karen.
Okay, um, I am Karen Monty Brodek, President of the Emerald Necklace Conservancy. Thank you very much, uh, members of the Park Commission. Really glad uh, to be able to speak with you about this. Um, for those that might not know the Emerald Necklace Conservancy, we're a nonprofit that works to support the Emerald Necklace Parks, including Franklin Park, and bring together about twenty-five groups up and down the Emerald Necklace, uh, and thousands of volunteers and uh, others, you know, every year to to support uh, particularly the trees, but also other major aspects of the park. Um, I hope you've, the commissioners have been able to see the letter and prior correspondence that we have submitted outlining the challenges with this proposal. And in fact, it is very sad because White Stadium and Franklin Park need a lot of investment. But there are some very significant problems with this proposal, and I want to make sure that um, those are all uh, highlighted uh, and we can understand um, how those are going to be addressed. Um, and you know, I want to applaud the Wu administration for considering an investment of fifty million dollars into the stadium. Um, and unfortunately, I do not believe that this proposal and its current model is the answer for our needs at White Stadium. Um, it is my understanding today you're not taking action, but you're you're getting feedback, so this is an excellent opportunity to do that. Um, uh, I think that sometimes there is a feeling out there that Franklin Park is um, is not a successful park, um, and that it needs more things. Uh, but Franklin Park is an incredibly busy, important park to the communities that depend on it, the cultural festivals, et cetera, and so um, the concerns that I'm noting today are about uh, how those things will be addressed, and there are processes for those, including the Massachusetts Environmental uh, Protection Act, other things uh, that I understand this project would not be receiving. So um, I want to bring up a a couple of those concerns that I highlighted in my letter. Uh, the Emerald Necklace Conservancy has a website where we've posted that correspondence as well. Some of the key uh, failings in this proposal that I want to highlight are not being discussed today because we're focusing on the design, the details, which I think uh, many of them uh, have a lot of potential value, but we need to think about some of the fundamental questions. The White Stadium and its grounds are constitutionally protected public recreation land and open space. The city cannot give Boston Unity Partners any rights or use the property without first going through the full Article ninety-seven constitutional process, including a Meepo filing, Article ninety-seven alternatives analysis, valuations, public comment, and last but not least, a two-thirds roll call vote of both the Massachusetts House and the Massachusetts Senate. White stadiums and its grounds are held in public charitable trust and have been since nineteen forty-seven. Um, when this, when this body uh, said that it was important that a public investment be made uh, and allowed for that also under public terms, the White, George Robert White um, am I still?
Go on, Karen. We had the stuff set till noon, so it reset, sorry.
Yeah, there go. Um, the assertion that this is private land uh, and doesn't have those protections is wrong. In fact, because this land is held in public charitable trust for the benefit of the inhabitants of Boston and the Boston Public Schools, et cetera, the George Robert White Fund trustees the trustees of a public charity have no authority to sign a lease or grant a lease to a private professional soccer team without other extensive legal process, which has not been done. The private use of the professional soccer games, private luxury buses, private offices, locker rooms, restaurants and bars is not permitted. It violates the public charitable trust imposed on this property since nineteen forty-seven. To con- to short circuit those protections is especially shocking when we think about the importance of this park to the multiple environmental justice communities that it serves. And um, this project, as it is proposed now, we understand would be using eighty percent of the weekends uh, during uh, the high school soccer, excuse me, high school football teams year and therefore displacing not only those games, uh, but also mini festivals in the area. Um, this proposal also segments the proposal, as people have pointed out, by just allowing the public to see half, which is incredibly difficult, uh, and in fact, is not permitted under the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act. You, it is important, of course, for the appropriate review of environmental protections to see a project in its fullness, and in fact, to review this project in combination with other things that are happening around the park, and there's a lot right now. There is a proposal for almost eight hundred and eight hundred and fifty plus units of housing for the formerly homeless and addiction treatment services in the Shattuck area. There are a lot of projects that need to be evaluated so that any of the improvements and the investments that are really needed in the park are done uh, properly. Uh, it is my understanding that I have heard that this project is planning to be in construction as early as this spring. And understanding that, it just does not seem possible as those processes have not taken place. Um, there's no serious public process has taken place um, on this project. There have been specific meetings about transportation or specific aspects, but there has not been something that again, shows the full proposal and also addresses um, the larger questions of the opportunities uh, presented by this proposal to the public, so the public can weigh in on those things. Um, one of the things that people have asked me, numerous people, is when does the city of Boston and Massachusetts start spending public money to improve stadiums? For a long time, that has been against public policy, but today, apparently, this is something we're interested in entertaining. I understand that the city of Boston has developed uh, the action plan, uh, and it was, I think, a very comprehensive plan, and we know that the overlook project was one of the most important projects for the community for the Franklin Park Coalition and the Alma Lewis area. I see that the R F P is just being issued for that, and that project, I think, really needs uh, to take uh, center stage for what the community needs, and we need to make sure that the White Stadium improvements work in collaboration with it. And in the the order that this project is moving, I don't see how that happens. Um, again, I am uh, very excited that this commission has the opportunity to weigh in on this proposal. But I think there are some fundamental questions that need to be answered here. I'm also confused because at times I feel like I hear from the group that this is a park, or it's not a park, or it's public land, or it's not public land. I want to just be incredibly clear. This is part of the park. It is now under the control of a separate public fund. And it is imperative that this commission and the city does everything in its power to protect the lands that we are lucky enough to have and to steward. Thank you very much for your time.
Are we, should I do the next person now?
Yeah, I think it's Walt, right?
Okay, yes, Walt. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Walt.
Perfect. Thanks for the opportunity to speak and and some of what you're about to hear is probably going to connect a little bit of what Karen said to a question that Commissioner Queely raised. The, I live 360 feet from the, from the stadium along with my family. So we, like a lot of other people, have a lot of, a lot of interest in the project. Myself and 149 other neighbors have signed a memo that lays out what we think the minimum conditions to approval of this project should be. And we've provided that to the city and to Boston Unity. We've asked them to meet with us in person to discuss those conditions. And they've not yet answered as to whether they'll meet with us to discuss the conditions. Now, as to actually responding to the specifics of what we've asked, the memo was only given to them a week ago. So I think indeed, I understand that they may be processing it still. Yet, in the meantime, decisions are being made and they're being made at a fast clip. And the very fact that this meeting was not publicized, and this is the connection back to Commissioner Queely's concern about, hey, how is it that I've, I live in JP and I haven't heard about this? And the fact that I only heard word of mouth and I live in the closest house to White Stadium is very troubling. And there's this impression that the the project is being sped along, decisions are being made, and this is, this is a foregoing conclusion. And, and there's really now an impression that the public input is it's, it's a gesture and it's not actually being taken seriously. And I'll give you a concrete example of, of where, where it feels as if there's pretend public input. One person and realize, Luis, Elisa, I realize that you speak for Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, but one person said in one meeting, you can't use the Seaver entrance and exit that can't be opened up. And that's, that's a two lane road that shuttles can go into the park. And then the next meeting we hear, well, that's off limits. And so instead, we're going to run shuttles down a road that's one lane in each direction. And that's Walnut where, where the houses are much closer to, to the road and the congestion's much higher. So there, there's, there's a sense that decisions are being made quickly. There's not transparency. There's not a real process and real input. And so we would, at my, we'll get to the end here, I would ask the commissioners to go slowly here. And while at this point, I remain a supporter of the project, as do the 149 other neighbors who have signed on to this memo. We would like to go slow, we slowly, we would like the conditions that we've proposed, which address simple things, traffic, parking, sound control, litter cleanup, and enforceability of commitments that are being made in the future by neighbors. We'd like those to actually truly be vetted in a real dialogue, not one where people tell us there's a process, there've been four meetings, but people don't actually respond when we ask them to come and sit with us. And we would ask you to, I would ask you to, to consider holding off and going slowly until you hear from the public that even if everyone's not perfectly satisfied, because no one's going to be perfectly satisfied, there's been a true hearing and that the issues have been really vetted thoroughly in the, in the public. Because once this is cemented, it's there for, for a long time. And I've gone on for some time. And so I'd like to thank you for the time.
Thanks, Walt. Shawna looks like KJ is next.
Okay. KJ, go ahead.
If the person under the name KJ wants to unmute themselves.
Go ahead, KJ.
Hi, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we hear you.
I apologize for that. I will be brief as well. I live in JP. I, for the most part, support this. And I'm very excited. I have two young athletes. One is a soccer player. Another one is runner. And I would like to echo what an earlier caller or an earlier commenter said about the importance of this country course. It is historic. You can talk to people at Stanford, Harvard, you tell them that you ran at Franklin Park. It's a big deal. So it is used by BPS all, all fall, all spring. They have meets there. And I just would love to ensure that that course remains intact. And I understand there's going to be construction and there's natural, you know, interruptions, but that is a critical thing. As well as, I couldn't remember the name of the person who mentioned working on drainage and that this course is not adversely affected by it because you can lead to serious injuries. These kids run in the snow, rain, ice. And we, you know, the, the Northeast regionals are now have just been moved to Franklin Park from New York by Foot Locker or New Balance. And that's an exciting thing for the city and injuries to these runners would be catastrophic. And then just the last thing I wanted to ask is the, the plans look fabulous. It looks like there's amazing people doing amazing things on it. There is a component that Boston Unity Partners is working on and it, they, it's very clear that the city is responsible for another section of it. Will you be using the same contractor? Because to me, that sends up, if that's not the case, or they're going to choose separate ones, that sends up red flags to me. Thank you.
KJ. Shawna looks like Mike Cozoo is next.
Okay, Mike, you are able to talk now.
My name is Michael Cozoo. I'm with Project Right. We represent many different neighborhood associations that abut the Franklin Park and White Stadium area. Here to support and follow through and add upon what Elisa Lisa, the Garrison Trotter Neighbor Association spoke on. We're very concerned about the impact of the traffic and parking plans. We do not feel that it's going to be adequate. We saw the negative impact of the BAA half marathon had upon the Garrison Trotter neighborhood. So we're extremely concerned about that and need to have further discussion. We also agree that rather than seeing half of the pie, we would like to see the whole pie to really assess how the role impact is going to take place. In terms of drainage issues, we should note that the drainage issues along Circuit Drive has not been dealt with adequately. There's been several times that Circuit Drive has been closed during these past rainstorms. We also had a situation where a bus and other cars were stalled out in Circuit Drive and how that will impact the rest of the White Stadium area as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mike. Shawna, I got a message. It's not showing his hand raised, but Charles Burnbaum is trying to raise his hand.
Okay. Hey, Charles, you should be able to talk now.
Thank you so much. I'm not sure why I'm having, I don't usually have a problem raising my hands.
Good to go.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. And thank you all. I'd like to just amplify some of the comments that have been made by Karen and Louis, as well as Commissioners Bollinger and Mariama. I am the founder, president and CEO of the Cultural Landscape Foundation. When I was just in my twenties and thirties, I had the good fortune for almost eight years of collaborating with William Presley, Marion Presley's office on the Emerald Necklace Park Master Plan. And it's been exciting for me over the last quarter century plus to see a newfound recognition for Boston's Emerald Necklace in the shadow of how we ended the last century where three cultural institutions were able to raise a billion dollars when the necklens, the Necklace Conservancy was in its infancy. I want to just sort of give a shout out to the Franklin Park Action Plan, which I think is an exemplary body of work. We are at a time now and why I created TCLF after being with the federal government for 15 years is that this age of top down planning as opposed to bottom up with community engagement, which several people have spoken about is absolutely critical. And what I want to bring to this forum is just to state the obvious, which is the Emerald Necklace is the first urban greenway in the world and a potential world heritage site. Franklin Park, as Dr. Charles Beveridge has previously written, is one of the four great country parks in America. And why that's important, when you go to the action plan, it's noted in Olmsted's words that this idea of rural vistas and an illusion of unlimited space and unbroken countryside is of paramount import, especially for people who are urban dwellers who don't have country houses. That this country park is their experience to have their own spiritual contact with nature and its abundance of scenery, as Olmsted had envisioned. Having said that, and I brought this up in the Landmarks Commission meeting last week, is the need for a much more in-depth visual and spatial analysis. When we look at the view from the overlook, when we look at the view through the pudding stone arch of the, of the bridge tunnel, what we're seeing here are built elements in the rural vistas that were intended. Olmsted himself had envisioned a long view across the playstead to give that impression of the country park and beyond to the Blue Hills and Milton. These are at risk. And I would also add that this visual and spatial analysis should also be done for the nighttime. This is a beacon, as it's illustrated in the renderings, and to quote Jennifer, who mentioned the needs of a new stadium, this is just that. There is a major amount of new design and construction associated with that that requires a much more in-depth analysis of the visual and spatial impacts on this potential world heritage candidate site. I encourage the commission to ask for more detailed renderings to fully understand what are the potential impacts of this resource on the greater park landscape and its place within the world-class Emerald Necklace Park system. Thank you.
Shawna.
Yep, Mary Glenn, you are able to talk now.
Okay. Yes, I also live right next to the park. We enter down towards Glen Road. I'm basically echoing what other people have said. I'm concerned about the connection to the Alma Lewis overlook and the tunnel, which we use all the time. I'm concerned about toddlers who I'm always with going around the stadium on balance bikes and then later, of course, roller blades and more advanced ways of getting about. And then the parking and traffic, particularly on Walnut, is a concern to me and to those I know. I'm also a little frightened by the statistic that Karen mentioned of 80% of weekends during high school game weekends would be taken that it does need, this facility does need to serve the public. And it's been wonderful the way it has done. I don't want to lose that. That's all. Thank you.
Olmsted Network, Shawna is next.
Okay, Olmsted Network, you're able to talk now?
Thank you. This is Anne Neil Petri, President of the Olmsted Network. We are based in Washington DC. And we are a national network of Olmsted Parks and Landscapes across the country. I'm attending today just to underscore that this is not just a local issue. This is an issue of national importance. And you've heard from a number of speakers already why. I think the White Stadium, there's no question that rehabilitation is important. But this is not just rehabilitation. It is a massive new project and intrusion into Franklin Park. As you've heard, this is the National Historic Registered Landmark Property, often known as the jewel of the Emerald Necklace. And I fear that many of the things we've heard today, and obviously there's much here to still consider and to look at. But much of the underlying premise is that green space is a place for building. And this was something that Frederick Law Olmsted was deeply concerned about when he worked throughout his career. And so I would just suggest that invoking Frederick Law Olmsted and saying that something is in the spirit of Frederick Law Olmsted does not make it so. And the potential for massive harm to the Olmsted design, a unique space in Boston is here and that the privatization that is raised by the fencing and other programming is of great concern to a space that was deemed a democratic space by Frederick Law Olmsted. The disruption of existing neighborhood activities is of deep concern. The lack of genuine public involvement is of deep concern. And as we've heard from multiple speakers, the fact that we're only looking at half the pie makes it almost impossible to provide the informed feedback that is necessary. So I'm here simply today to say this is of great concern and I hope that the local leaders will realize the great asset that they have and will take time to make certain that whatever is done to the White Stadium is done with Olmsted's spirit and goals in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any other hands for public comment. I'm just kind of, just got one. Bernie?
Okay, Bernie, you may speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Bernard Doherty. Member of the Neighborhood Council here in Jamaica Plain. I'm also Vice Chair of it. And I've also lived in Jamaica Plain practically all my life. That's a pretty good life by this period. But the reality is that when I see all this coming down, listen to all the comments that have been made here, all the way from Sam Gray to Walt Polod to different others and the Olmsted Network, which I thought was very good. There is a real, real problem here with community input. These are the people who are being asked to subsidize these projects. They live and they own their homes. They've built communities. And I want to see those communities stay in place. I'm sure you do too. But the reality is when we do things quickly, we usually end up having problems that we did not perceive. Or if we did perceive them, we just shunted them to the side. I do not want to see that happening here. I grew up in Franklin Park. I grew up on 26 Ifly Road, which goes right into that. I went to Our Lady of Lords. I went to Boston English. I ran track at White Stadium as a youngster in the sixties, early late sixties, early sixties rather. And I enjoyed that experience. It was a great part of my life and I would like to know that it continues to be a great part of other young people's lives as they come up and older adults like myself today who use these areas as respite, as areas where we can reconnect with nature. Franklin Park is a tremendous asset and it should not be treated as something that is just a commercial project. The city has to live up to its responsibility, as does the state. And realizing that the people in the communities around it have made an investment in it also. So I would hope that we would be more concerned with getting information out, not half the pie, as was stated by one gentleman just a while ago, but the whole pie or the whole plan, whatever you want to call it. That we understand what the issues are here with the communities that surround us and what they're being asked to give up. What are the long-term results here? As someone said, you know, here we're signing a contract with somebody and we don't know whether as they grow, they will just leave it as it is and go. No, there may be prop, maybe something to that to be said. I don't know. But what I do know is we do not have enough information in our hands. We do not have a clear view of what is happening. So we can have an overview of what is happening. So we can put information back to you as. So we can put information back to you as so you can understand it. We may be in your way. That's just the problem you have. We are a body of citizens, voters also, taxpayers, and we want to make sure that our needs are thought of first and foremost, as long as also the needs of the public schools, children that we have in this city who have been overlooked for quite some time and definitely need to have more assets at their hands so that they can grow and make better citizens. I don't disagree with this proposal, but as such as it's going at the moment, I have some serious concerns. Thank you.
It looks like David is next.
Okay, next one is David. Oops, there we go.
On mute. Is my audio on?
And we can hear you, David.
Oh, great. Thank you. My name's David Moyer. I live at the, a little farther away over by Forest Hills, but I've been extremely busy with thinking about the Shattuck. And I'm an architect and have done urban development. In fact, I designed the home of one of the board members of Unity Partners out in Denham. I, I want to sort of come, just touch on in a more optimistic light. I think what's most important is that we are actually making huge progress by pulling people together. And I think everyone's seeing how there are a lot of very intelligent people who pull together some very intelligent things. And to work together at this point going forward, I think can do well. I want to touch on one thing about integration of different human needs here. The problem we're concerned, many people are concerned with is the privatized competitive sport element of this may be overbearing. That could be true. That certainly has happened in the past. Let me suggest that we think a little bit about a park that is one of the most beautiful in America. That's not an Olmsted Park, which would be the Tanglewood Complex. And think about whether the kind of thing that can happen in Franklin Park is Boston's Tanglewood that could have sport. And I want you to think extremely seriously about how the difference between soccer as a sport and cross-country running as a sport. I'm one who's found my mental health and physical conditioning in the more passive sports of cross-country running, cross-country skiing, mountain climbing. Franklin Park is a little mountain set, a little rural, a little massive. It's roaring hills. It's a place to be part of and go. That can be integrated. Down at the Shattuck Hospital, that was a public health area. I think we might all agree that one of our major public health issues right now is the mental health of children. And as we know from people like Biles, it's easy for people in competitive sport to get overloaded, and they needed, and they need to take time out to get their heads back together again. That's part of what sport is dealing with these days. So maybe we can wind this down. Maybe we can pull a bunch of things together well in a way that balances and meets all of these needs. And integrate and design. I think I'd better stop there. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, David. Shauna, it looks like Derek Evans is next.
Hey, Derek, you are able to talk now?
Mute.
We can hear you now, Derek.
Actually, I think it's, it shows muted again, but it was unmuted for a moment. Okay, now unmuted.
All right. My name is Derek Evans, Derek Christopher Evans. I am a Roxbury residential property owner, city taxpayer, and a civil rights historian, who is also Mariama, hello, you know this, a nationally recognized leader and innovator in conservation, restoration, and historic preservation of black communities and traditionally marginalized places, particularly on the Gulf Coast of the United States, including my native Turkey Creek community in Mississippi, the historic Africa Town community in Mobile, Alabama, the Lower Ninth Ward of New Orleans, Louisiana, among others. In Roxbury, where I arrived for undergraduate study to attend Boston College, I spent the nineteen nineties as a Boston public school teacher in Roxbury, at the Phyllis Wheatley Middle School in what was then known as Dudley Square. I also spent it as an African-American Studies and US History lecturer at Boston College and at Roxbury Community College. I taught the literature of social reflection, which included race, gender, environmental class, and other such literature selected by Professor Dr. Robert Coles, for whom I worked, Pulitzer Prize-winning professor. I also participated for years in helping to run youth programs at several local agencies in Roxbury, including the Urban League of Eastern Massachusetts. Before that, as a youngster, I spent the nineteen eighties in Roxbury also, deeply engaged as an undergrad and graduate student of legendary scholar interpreters of the Boston experience over time and space, including Dr. Sam Bass Warner of Boston University, Dr. Thomas O'Connor of Boston College, and again, Dr. Robert Coles of Harvard, among others. I learned equally and even more intimately and often from the daily lived experience and visions of my immediate Roxbury elders and neighbors, including, including in person, frequently, Miss Alma Lewis, Ruth Batson, Mel King, Byron Rush, the late Mel Mia Cass, Henry Hampton, the producer of Izzy Prize, Amanda Houston, and even non-elders, but sort of might as well have been Mr. Louis Alisa, who's on this call, the Honorable Judge Leslie Harris and others. The reason I am on this call is that I have many, many interests, hopes, and insights and fears for Roxbury, for Franklin Park, and for this stadium centered on white, and for this project centered upon White Stadium. I've been a lover of the park of Roxbury and of that stadium since my arrival from Greyhound Bus Station after riding from Mississippi in nineteen eighty-four. But let me focus simply on reminding you of something that's very important and contextual. And in the end, circumstantial and impactful. We, unlike Mississippi, we are living and talking about a project in a city of municipality which claims to prioritize above all things a racial justice and equity lens. So in all sincerity, I can't really thank you for this opportunity in that it feels, again, and concurrently with some other things that are going on, like an assault or a part of assault or a lead-up to an assault. I will remind you, I would charge the Parks Commission, the mayor, and Reverend Hammond that from based on recent experience, observation, and now this, you've got to be very thoughtful about the possibility, and I say the verdict is in, that you are essentially the new racists, the progressive, well-spoken, good-intentioned, articulate advocates, cheerleaders for racial equity, environmental justice, conservation, restoration, preservation, climate resiliency, and so on. But the impact on the ground now in the last couple of years, since the Wu administration and before, no different, is about spatial displacement, the new races, spatial displacement of marginalized communities and their neglected municipal spaces and assets that they steward in your neglected absence. To show up suddenly, as has frequently, is increasingly happening, is happening now with White Stadium, with basically taking a block of meat that's been frozen for forty years and zapping it in a microwave and calling it well-cooked is a really good metaphor of what has begun to take place vis a vis stadium, White Stadium. The LLC out of Delaware is not even one-year-old. It's a one-profit Delaware-based LLC, same place we pay our credit card bills. Okay? A very pro-business, multi-state business-friendly state. And to displace our school athletes, our public athletes and others for the purpose of a professional soccer league, professional sports, I disagree that that's a great opportunity for Boston. I disagree that it's a great coming together of all of these partners and stakeholders from outside of Roxbury. I'm telling unless Roxbury residents and other neighborhood adjacent residents who can have a chance to aggregate our concerns, our fears, our hopes, our interests, our desires for this project. That hasn't been allowed to happen. It's not gonna happen. I don't, I fear that's not gonna happen. The reason I fear it's not gonna happen is because that's not the norm. The Parks Commission and you, Parks Commissioner Ryan and you, Reverend Hammond, are the actual most unforgivable in a sense, or most, not unforgivable, everybody can be forgiven, but the most guilty of taking public land. And even after two years at Malcolm X Park of intense community engagement, taking a series of U-turns. And after a nine million dollar investment in so-called improvement, there's not even a fence across Dale Street from one end of the park to the other. An entire side from corner to corner of that park is unprotected. After nine million dollars, after two years of community engagement, and now we come to this. The same cast of characters, the mayor, the commissioner, okay, the chief, the Parks Commission, by omission and by commission, allowing, in this case, a private developer, all right, to, and in the spirit of improving and helping Roxbury and bringing investment to the hood, sometimes neglect is better than abuse. And I fear that this will be a case of that, as the Malcolm X Park project was, where we lost many of old growth trees, legacy Olmsted trees. This was a legacy, Olmsted Legacy Park, redesigned in the early nineteen hundreds by Olmsted's sons. I'm talking about Malcolm X Park, not far from Franklin Park. It's one of the little side jewels just outside and adjacent to the Emerald Necklace. And that happened because, first of all, not even the two other landlords adjacent to the subject property were ever brought in as part of the planning process. And so as a result, we have not one, but two underutilized splash pads that at the expense of tremendous loss of old growth tree in a, in a heat aisle in the middle of Roxbury. Since none of you care to connect the dots other than to read the notes after a Zoom or the this or that, but Roxbury residents and thinkers and doers and long-term stewards of these marginalized assets can't afford not to, you need to start prioritizing on the front end and on the final sign-off the folks most concerned, affected, adjacent, and historically informed, experienced, and pretty much like myself fed up. So again, I will end by saying, let me be very clear to all of you who think you agree with Mayor Wu and others who pledge to be anti-racist. There's one form of very insidious and well-known racism, it used to be well-known, that you've got to be equally mindful and careful of. It's not just overt racist violent behavior or past stuff like redlining and slavery and lynching and and black people, you know, after they're dead. But it is, there's two you need to bear in mind on this project, because this is patently racist already. It's patronizing racism, where, you know, you've got this really great idea and everybody's gonna love it and I'm like benevolent mass of just spoon-feeding, you know, fatback to some gleeful Negroes. That's, that's what this better not be. And it's what it's already starting to feel like. That is just insidious and insulting. And the second thing is that Roxbury people, African-American people, including people who are not in government, okay, or who are not on a commission, maybe they don't have time, can also lead and help lead and can think, and they read books and they travel, and they know who Olmsted is. In fact, some, some of us spend our time educating people whose job it is to know what the city's assets are, what those things are, historically, culturally, spatially, geologically. I'm but one of them. So please don't be patronizing. Please slow this project down. Please allow for more public input and participation. And I'll try to be nice. I'll try to be nice. But otherwise, you know, this is actually, again, I'm a Mississippi, and this is worse. What I've been experiencing and observing, and I fear I'll see it with White Stadium, is worse. I, I got a $500,000 National Park Service grant myself and won Best of the South for Historic Restoration in 2021 from the assistance of the Archconservative US Senator, the late Thad Cochran of Mississippi, who had a whole different view of engaging with black communities in Mississippi, as well as white, when it came to Mississippi historic, cultural, and environmental assets. I hear a lot of noise and a lot of talk here in Boston about historic preservation, folks who don't even know the history, ecological restoration, part of it. Then I hear more noise than, in contrast to the results that I see and that I would get in Alabama, Mississippi, Africa Town, Turkey Creek, Lower Ninth Ward. This place needs to do better. This place produced Olmsted. You need to ask yourself, what would Olmsted do? Olmsted made it perfectly clear that the purpose of his parks and this necklace, and this being the first one, and it's the envy of the world, was for people to encounter democracy, no matter what their circumstances were, spatially, indoors, outdoors, in these densely populated. This gentleman, more than anyone of his era, right before and during the turn of the century, twentieth century, figured out that the rapidly urbanizing, rapidly multilingual, rapidly immigrant-accepting, rapidly challenged, no more or less challenged than Boston today, could only survive if with extreme vision and due diligence and thoughtful planning, genius. Not what I'm hearing here. This is, this Delaware stuff is not genius. It's marketing. It's marketing.
I got, we gotta go on to the other public comment, if you just have another second to wrap it up.
Yeah, well, Ryan, do your best. I know it's an uphill struggle. Try to emulate Olmsted. Thank you.
Ryan, I'm gonna need a break soon. I have not had a second, so.
Yeah, we have two more people in public. Last two, and then we're ending public comment. So Ricky Thompson? Shauna, are you able to promote Ricky?
Yes. Ricky, you can talk now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, Ricky.
Okay, I'll be brief. I like the gentleman who spoke earlier, who said that he went to English High School and ran in White Stadium. I did also, and I would love to see the stadium revitalized and refurbished, but we do have a few concerns. We need to be able to see and analyze both plans, as other people have said. There should not be shadows on Walnut Ave because it's too congested already. Use of circuit drive and Pierpont Road will cause problems with or conflict with the zoo and our summer community. will cause problems with, or conflict with the zoo and our summer community events. Football should not be displaced from the stadium because the stadium was constructed for this very purpose. We need to see how close the Grove and its building is to the overlook because we have been advocating for the revitalization of the overlook for many years. And now it seems we're on the one yard line. So we want to make sure that these things coincide. Thank you.
Next is Victoria. Go ahead.
Victoria, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be very brief. I'm Victoria Williams. Formerly, formerly the Assistant Parks Commissioner in Boston for five years. Very knowledgeable of the entire park system in the city. I just wanted to highlight a few things that are very concerning. I know many people have raised the issue about traffic and parking and who's neighbors and who's not neighbors. I also am the president of an organization called Council of Elders Limited Partnership. And we own elderly housing at the corner of Columbus Avenue and Walnut Avenue. There's, we have approximately 100 units for seniors and disabled persons, which I, it's not clear to me how they would get in and out of their homes to do shopping on Saturday during game days if Walnut Avenue, which is already a narrow street, is being suggested as one means in and out of the facility, even if it's only just for shuttle buses. The other point I wanted to make is that I do fully agree with this being pushed through the community in a piecemeal fashion. One of the commenters mentioned earlier the other things that are going on in and around Franklin Park. And I think those from a big picture standpoint need to be taken into consideration. The Shattuck Hospital, whether it goes through or not. The bus lane up the middle of Blue Hill Avenue, whether that happens or not. The White Stadium piece, there's been some talk about possibly closing Circuit Drive to through traffic. I mean, those are all big picture items that I mean, it's very difficult for the community to even assess something without understanding what in and around Franklin Park would look like if these things actually came to pass. And I just want to make sure that, one, I'm representing the elders and seniors, particularly that live at Walnut and Columbus Avenue and the big picture of Franklin Park as a as a whole, as the, as the action plan is done. And as I said, I was very involved in the Presley Firm's master plan for the park that we need to take a step back and and put the pieces together so that we have something to truly assess and respond to. I am a soccer supporter. I have a granddaughter who plays excellent soccer. This feels and sounds like an opportunity, but a small piece of what's happening in our community. And we need to look at big picture. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. That concludes our public comments for today on this one. I want to thank the group for Boston NBA Soccer for their design review. I know you have future reviews that will go through landmarks and go through the Article 80 process. The Parks Department will be engaged throughout the process. And I assume if you get through those processes, you'd be back in front of us again. So with that, thank you for your time on that. Carrie, there's one last item on the agenda. I do not know if you want to postpone it until next week or if it's something, next month or something quick.
Okay, we, we can do that, but I just wanted to read the list of comment letters that we did receive at the request of the people that sent them. So we received letters for the record from the Emerald Necklace Conservancy, the Franklin Park Coalition, Walt Pollard on behalf of the Parkside Neighborhood Association, Mr. Pete Duggan, spelled P E A T, and Ms. Nadine Volicer, spelled V O L I C E R, Mr. Sam Gray, Ms. Sam, Ms. Sarah Freeman, and Ms. Renee Stacy Welch.
Thank you. Carrie, is it worth mentioning for the BPDA letters and MEPA, is it a short thing or is it something we should?
Simply a presentation for the commissioners of the letters that were provided by the Boston Parks Department for Article 80 projects that were reviewed in the last year. So they can read it and ask any comments at a future hearing if they'd like a meeting.
Okay. With that, anything else from the commissioners?
Thank you again for having us here today. I appreciated all of the comments and everyone's time today. Thank you very much.
I have a motion from the commissioners to adjourn, adjourn.
I'll make a motion, second.
David Quillie made the motion. Lisa Burns, I second it. Thank you all for joining us today, today's long hearing. And we look forward to future engagement over the upcoming months. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.